The meeting order is February 8th. We stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
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 The minutes from the January 13th meeting, was there any corrections, additions?
I have one question, maybe a few, but it has to do with... It was a question concerning the dates, change of the dates. I don't recall trustee Coleman indicating he had a problem with the dates, if there was any conflict. I don't recall it coming up in the meeting.
Do you already post them on section of the meeting?
Yes. It's the second line up. Trusties Coleman and Art, we preferred not changing the Monday meetings because of schedule conflicts. I remember trustee Art stating that, but I don't recall it coming up by trustee Coleman.
Do you have a report?
No, I don't know. I didn't have an opinion on it.
Anything else? That's all I can say.
No, I already have.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion made a second.
Second.
Second was made, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Sorry.
Clearing.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Perros.
Yes.
Yes.
Waylon.
And what? Kate Knowles first report.
Our members have the copy, so it's asking from the seats since last meeting, $113,866.91. And I wanted to announce the appointment of Patty Meyer as the deputy village clerk effective immediately. Patty's been full time with the village for nine years and has been handling some of my clerk related duties for the last few years. Plus now she's going to be the backup for village board meetings and be required to be trained as a designated FOIA and open meetings act officer. And she was happy to accept the position. Just wanted to let her know that. And also I have a report attached to the clerk's report of all credit card receipts in the last year. I thought it'd be interesting to take a look at how much we've been collecting via credit card. In 2013, we collected $57,588.79 in credit card payments for water bills, dog tags, yard waste bags, police fines, toll fees, and building permits. The online payments list is when you click on epay on our website and on site is when you come to village hall and swipe the credit card and shown that credit cards are being well utilized in the village hall. And it's interesting that the largest payments are always, almost always in the even month of the year, which means that credit cards are utilized the most to pay late water bills and not just on time ones. So I thought that was interesting.
Any questions? Under recognition of audience, we have one item on the agenda and from the Beecher Hardware Store asking for a temporary use permit for a storage container and Beecher Hardware, which is located at 500 East Indiana. We have that and like your failure to make presentation.
It was a couple of weeks ago, I presented to Towne Beecher that we are looking at opening up school rental as part of a hardware store. And we recognize that there are certain pieces of equipment that we cannot house in the building. So we were looking to put a 20-foot container next to the building in the southeast west corner where the current guardhouse is at. The need for that is something we, the landlord won't allow us to build anything permanent at this point. We're not even sure that at this point, you know, how longevity of us even staying in that building. So we, like I said, we're looking for something on a temporary use so we can establish a tool level business. And frankly, it's our way of hopefully getting some longevity with the hardware store, but it's struggling right now.
You then mentioned several things that you'd like to do as far as the aesthetics to the building or the storage shuttle, whatever you want to do. Can you explain some of that, please?
Well, we were going to put it up as close as we can to the building. We were going to make sure it's painted the same exact color as the building. If necessary, we could, you know, put some siding, wood siding across just to make it look nicer. But in all reality, it'll be, you know, with the hardware store and with our lawn and garden stuff, we're going to have pallets of, you know, stone and topsoil and fertilizers and mulch and all those things that you typically would have in our garden center, which will basically pretty much bury that thing to the point where if anybody pulled in there, really the only part you're going to see is the place where you would bring the equipment in and out of it. But I've been, actually, my partner who's in Miami said that he went to the store and strangely enough, they had the same thing by the hardware store. He said because they painted the same color of the building, he says, you don't even know how to see it. You know, it's just blood.
You're asking for five years?
Yes. If we stay there, if we, our plans are, if we get the business established and we get some longevity to it, there is a possibility that we would buy the building. If we buy the building, we would put a permanent, like a garage or something back there. That's the answer.
Questions to the board?
You indicate you're going to put it on the southwest corner of the property, but that would put you away from the building.
Up the building.
Southwest corner of the building. Of the building.
Of the building.
Under section 4.17, the zone where the village board may grant a temporary use for something such as this, as long as the temporary use is assigned and specified through the time. The last time we did this that I can recall, we allowed a seven-year temporary use of the old Beecher Hardware Store, which became a faith reform church, I believe. And they were branded seven years and they moved out and removed. So this is a typical type of temporary use requirement.
I noticed that in the document you sent to the village on the 23rd, you indicate that you're expecting a terminal less than five years. Is there a reason why we're putting no less than instead of no more than? Do you plan on possibly purchasing the building by?
Well, because I don't think, because if we're going to be there five years, we'll have a permanent structure. I'm not, you know, if, if the business, I would like to personally have a garage there. Because we, but one of the problems that we have with that building is that we need a lift truck. And you can't put a lift truck in that building. And for us to do lawn and, you know, lawn and garden stuff, to wield these pallets of topsoil and stuff, we're doing it by hand and it's dangerous and it's backbreaking. So like I said, long term is that we want to make, we'd rather have a garage there that's got electricity and such so that we can put this apartment. And if we did that, we would probably put it somewhere probably in the, would still be in the south part of the park lot, but it would probably be the southwest corner.
I just have a problem with saying not less than five years. It's kind of open ended. I prefer it to be not more than five years, since you plan on purchasing the building within three. Maybe not less than means it can be even further. It's not going to be less than five years, which means in three years, you're not going to take it down. You're going to be there for five and more.
That's fine. I don't care which way, how you award it, just as long as they get five years, that's all.
I have a question. How many parking spaces will you be taking up on that piece of property with that container?
None.
None.
Because it's close enough to the building that they'll be, like they did even in the summer. We've got right now, we've got a garden center there that people park in front of that. And that garden center is 20. So it won't take up any room.
In all fairness, the question, you know, we relocate the garden center and that may take up some parking space.
Is that the garden house that's going to the northeast or northwest?
Yeah. And I've never seen him use all those parking spaces. He misses.
Well, that's because there's twelve pallets in the building.
Yeah. Less than three is even the princess or something.
Right. Exactly.
Scott? Anything?
No.
Scott?
No.
You would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion granting the request for a temporary use permit for a storage container at the Beecher Hardware Store at 500 East Indiana Avenue not to exceed five years.
Second.
Motion made a second. Any questions to the motion discussion? Roll call.
Waylon.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Perros.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Clear.
Yes.
Any questions? By all means, call back.
Yeah. And I'll send you a letter giving you the high end of the stage.
Thank you.
And is there anybody else that wishes to address the board this evening?
I wonder if I could do that after I've heard the comments from the Casey's people.
Hey, in all fairness, the public portion question or any information, anybody that wishes to make a comment, anything that's coming up later in the agenda would have to be done now. Once we go past this point, it's up to the village board to deliberate and normally we would not allow public comment. So if you want to comment on anywhere the issues tonight, now would be the time.
It would be senseless for me to comment now before I heard what the Casey's people have to say about the proposal.
If something comes up, raise your hand, we can go from there. No? Okay. Anybody else wish to address the board, man? For the committee board, I'd like to change the agenda a little bit, like little planning, building, and zoning. Trustee Aaron.
Consider an ordinance granting a special use permit to Dutch American Foods for offense in front yard setback to sugar silo security. PCC held their public hearing and no one testified. After public hearing, PCC voted to recommend approval. He wasn't here tonight?
Probably forgot, but they were here to be here.
I could consider ordinance number 123. 123, grant special use permit to Dutch American Foods for offense in the front yard setback for the sugar silo security.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and second. Any questions or discussion?
I got one question. Was there any? All our paperwork and everything said it was a chain link, but then I heard already say that it was going to be like a wrought iron style. Was it ever declared or clarified as to what kind of fence it is? All our paperwork, everything for PCC said it's chain link.
Chain link.
But then in the meeting, already said wrought iron.
I don't think you've been quite there.
Or the final height of it or any of that. Eight foot chain link. Eight foot, just around the silo.
Well, see now, eight foot chain link you got, but it came over as wrought iron.
I don't.
Remember hearing wrought irons or chain link in there. In fact, yeah, it did for chain link, if I remember any of these papers. Maybe not.
He had stated eight feet because of security issues. But he did state, I agree with John, it was, he was talking wrought iron. I remember him saying that.
I mean, you can make that a condition if you want. No, either here nor there. I'm fine with it either way. I was just curious as to what it was going to be. I didn't have any idea.
Get a press conference?
Hmm?
Get a press conference?
No, I just said, it doesn't matter to me either way. I mean, it's just I, I never heard clarified which, what it was going to be. I mean, it's a simple question.
The motion made, and I believe there was a second. And is there any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Perros.
Yes.
Waylon.
Yes.
Do you want them to do any kind of discussion or just do a report? Are they going to do a presentation again?
Yeah.
Consider an ordinance granting a special use permit for the gas station at the mini market at 730 Dixie Highway, southwest corner Miller and Dixie. PCC held the hearing, which was attended by the board, and we get quite a few residents also that appeared. After the hearing, a motion was made to recommend approval for the special use with seven conditions, which are explained in the case ordinance. A motion tasked by vote of four to one. Recommendation is now coming before the village for consideration. There are two unresolved issues, but I think the one was resolved, correct Bob?
Yeah, there are several that will vote for tonight in the presentation. It's included in the closed argument. It's their last part of the session.
I have one question, George, which George is here. Were you satisfied with the?
With the law state?
Yes.
Yeah, I think chose a pretty good safety record. Hasn't been anything the last few years and considering size of their operations, pretty miniscule.
Would you want them to make their presentation?
Well, if we need, I'll get that on, apologize, but my name is Pat Moon. I'm a departmental engineering manager, responsible for the site design here for the Casey's site.
Hey, maybe come over on this side of the table and block your back.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe over here.
Over here.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here with Nate Moore, our traffic engineer, and Bryce Warren from Casey's answering any questions. I believe most of you were at the previous meeting. I don't know if you want me to go through the whole presentation again or just hit some of the high points, fully your preference or what you need us to do.
I'm going to hit the high points.
Okay. As you mentioned on the slide, we've got up is the site that Casey's looking at, Miller and Dixie. It's an old automobile site. Site's currently almost 100% asphalt pavement. Let's get the next slide here. On that site, it's property subdivided into three lots here on the recent subdivision. This location right here is in the southeast corner of the site. It's the ingress egress easement that there was some discussion on at the last meeting. The statement down here, I apologize, this is not as good a copy. I don't know if like this is how we got it from the reporter's office. Basically in that statement, it says that's the only access point for lot one onto route one. So there was some question on that before, so I just wanted to show you the copy of the recorded subdivision for the development. Again, on the site plan, this is the site as we proposed it at the last meeting. There's some discussion we'll be going into as far as access on the Miller Street. Basically, I want to hit the high points here. It's a 4,350 square foot convenience store with fuel islands out here, there's five islands. Diesel will be sold on this side and on this side on the outside of the pumps are fuel, fuel tank farms right here. On this site, if you look around the building, there are no other appetitances shown, which means they're not going to have any red, there's no Redbox, there's no Rhino Food Sales, there's no mulch sales, no firewood sales of any kind. Basically, they'll only sell what they can get inside the store, which is basically the businesses, coffee, pizza, and snacks of that nature. Down in this location, we have our dumpster enclosure, which is wrapped by a wood fence around this part of the property line. Worked with the school board. They preferred this location as opposed to having it up here. Didn't get real much, a lot of discussion on it, but they said they wanted it on that rear property line. As a result, I believe, and I can't remember, we've agreed to the security camera back in this area as well. So that'll be monitored between the back of the building and the wood fence so, you know, so they can monitor what's going on back there. Life coverage, parking, photometrics, based on we met in December and then brought last meeting, they all met the village zoning requirements. Truck access, full access off of Dixie here, full access off of Miller up here. And which way they come in or exits, these configurations will allow the trucks to, you know, go south or north on Dixie Street without driving over the curb lines. The building exteriors, as we've shown here, first three, I think it's three and a half feet are brick. It's a drive and finish from here on up, all earth tone colors. Sides on the south and north will be the same, the brick finish, drive and finish. The Casey's monument sign, it's going to be an LED internally lit sign controlled from the store. All signage for pricing changes will be taken care of from inside. Couple of issues we're working with here with regards to drainage. The site previously was almost 100% impervious. We are actually adding about 7,000 square feet of green spaces, so we're actually less impervious for this as per the codes. We're going to have to provide detention so we're, at our storm, so we're tied directly into the 36-inch storms around here. The building, collecting the storm system runs out into the system here. And because we need a little bit of a grain easement, we talked to the school board, we're going to install some catch bases here for a drainage issue they have in exchange for allowing us to do a little of grading offsite. It's kind of a win-win for both entities. Canopy, roof drains are also tied into the storm system up here as well. What's the next slide, Nate? Okay, we've got some issues to talk about on traffic. I'll let Nate get into that in much more detail. I wanted to just kind of cover the approval condition, which I believe, I have a letter from Doug Beach. From what I, let's see if I have my notes here. They provided information, we're going to provide hydrocarbon filters. Why don't you go back? All the catch basins on the property will have hydrocarbon filters. No matter how safe any customer is, there's always a little bit of fuel that drips. If you notice when you take the dispenser out from the fuel island, put it in your car, there's always something to drip. So when the rains come, they'll wash that into the catch base and these hydrocarbon filters will collect that into a, basically it's a sock filter runs around the inlet every six months or so. Those things are replaced and disposed of properly. So each inlet, there are three out here. There's one right here on this corner. Each of those inlets are going to have the hydrocarbon filters. We've got specs on that. We can provide those to the village at such time we submit final plans. Casey's has agreed to connect the building fire alarm to the dispatch. In the letter, I have all, I'm not going to go through all that, but basically information on pointill graphic material, not hiring, knowingly hiring sex offenders is all covered in there. Already covered the school board concern back here with the fence along the rear property line. We've also provided what information Casey's put in the letter regarding to loss. And the last item is the right turn lane up here. I know there's been a lot of discussion on this. I know our study shows that, in our opinion, a right turn lane is not warranted or needed at this location. I know there's been discussion, but the community feels is adequate up there, but I've just been asked to reiterate our findings to the board and ask that it be taken off the wanted conditions. If you're agreeing with that, Casey's would have to decide how to proceed if it remains a condition. So in my discussion with them, Nick, we still feel it's not necessary. We don't think it's going to significantly improve the functionality. That intersection is 80% of the traffic is making a left-hand turn to go north. Based on the study and what we've seen through the traffic counts, the average of one part of the two minutes is going to make the right-hand turn. Yeah, so with that, I guess we'll leave it up to the board for any further questions or discussion on that if you have on with us. Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, trustee Clear, he was asking about the solid fence at those fronts compared to the round line.
Right here?
Yes. And there was discussion about building the fence up to the building, but then the school district said they wanted it on the rear property line.
On the rear property, yes.
What was the reason? I can't remember the exact.
I'll be honest, I tried to get home, he left me a voicemail message about that. He said that they wanted to keep it on the rear property line as we originally proposed. So I never really gave a clarification as to what their reasoning was on that.
The thing to understand, why, why the public safety had that comment, right?
Yes.
Pagan's.
Yes.
The fence was being put there because of the request of the school, correct? Or was that the argument question?
Yeah. My understanding is the fence was, fence was asked to be put here because of the alcohol sales as another deterrent and also to make sure the kids, if they left the school, would go up against the sidewalk as opposed to running through, you know, the side yard.
So what I'm getting at is that we had a discussion with the school and I don't recall what their reasoning was behind it. But we, we left a discussion with if the school would prefer it there since they're the ones to ask it to be there to begin with. We'd simply abide by them and put it where they want it. And then we countered that by asking for the camera at the back of the building to solve our concerns, which I believe he's agreed to do.
Is that a solid fence going up there?
It's an old ready board on board shadow box style fence. We can make it solid if that's preferred. We've just got a standard detail, we're just doing all three board, but we can make it solid if you like.
No, I don't, I don't want to sound.
Shadow boxes. Can I get back to your right turn lane or just make sure we're on the same page? In the letter that was written to us, they said if the city wishes to pursue the turn lane, Casey's would be willing to pay for half.
Yes.
You're saying you would prefer to take it off the table?
They were saying that based, based on our analysis, we've gone through, we've shown it's not warranted. They would like to have it taken off, but it's, you know, they are, you know, whatever your decision is, they're going to go with that. But they were still asking, they don't think it's necessary.
So nothing's changed from the letter is what I'm getting at?
No, no.
You refer not to you there, but if it is there, this is what you're offered, is right?
Correct. Correct. They were still asking, you know, that they don't think it's necessary, but we can go from there. And I do have a site plan later on if you want to see it, what the turn lane would look like if that's where it goes, if you want to see the plan.
Do you have a price estimate?
Yeah. It's between $45,000 and $50,000 because of the debt of payment, including engineering. That's why you haven't done that. Yeah, pretty much. So it's going through from the time we're, we're going to get the final drawings done, get them to I.D.A. back with instruction.
Do you have a timeframe from I.D.A. to run the turn lane?
I'll be honest, I've had trouble getting a hold of them. I sent them the concept plan, just to get some feedback. They said they'd get back to me last week. Got to try to call it out. I've heard back, they're a very difficult company, all of the districts. I know they got a deal with Chicago, they got a lot of compliance issues up there.
They're probably all policy.
Yeah, probably. So I've done some other stuff through District One. I, timeframe from then is not much longer than anywhere else, maybe another week or two, but you just can't get one phone. It's not, it's not much of an issue.
Okay.
I guess with that, I can turn it over to Nate, he can kind of walk you through the traffic results real quick.
There we go. As Pat alluded to, we've, we've talked about this a couple of different times, so I'll just speak briefly about it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end that anybody has. Again, keeping it brief, what Pat has up here is a summary of our existing traffic counts that were obtained on October 30th of last year. It was a Wednesday, typical school day. Counts were collected for a 12-hour period. And after summarizing the counts, we found that the AM peak hour was 7:15 to 8:15, which coincides with the school arrival and then also the adjacent commuter travel. The, and as you see here with these numbers, your first number is your AM number, so that means in the morning. As for here, there's 60 vehicles making eastbound left, 16 making an eastbound right in the morning. The PM peak hour took place between 4:15 and 5:15. That was coincides with, of course, with people coming home from work. The, that would be the numbers that are within the brackets here. So in the afternoon, 49 people making eastbound left, eight people making eastbound right. Now, since the PM does not coincide with the afternoon dismissal, we also did look at the school dismissal period. That took place between 2:30 and 3:30. And as everybody knows, there's a 10-minute period, 2:55 roughly to 3:05. The video that we've seen is essentially gridlocked. However, prior to that time and then after that 10-minute period, the traffic fairly dissipates quite easily and it goes back to normal periods during the day. Just one other thing to note within each of those peak hours, there's about a 15-minute period within each of those, speaking to the, in the morning, 7:45 to 8 o'clock. There's periods where there's two to three vehicles that are at that intersection, however, they relatively are able to get onto route one quickly because they're looking for one gap of traffic and then they almost go out in two-vehicle platoos, they use the same gap of traffic to go out. And then again, throughout the average hour, traffic flows very well, relatively well. So after we have those numbers for the peak hour, then we essentially grade the intersection. So just like in school, we grade an intersection based on its level of service. And as you see up here, that's a measure of, to vehicle congestion, we measure that in seconds, vehicular seconds. And A through F, A is the best, F's the worst, A would indicate free flow, F would be gridlocked typically in our design. These levels are what's acceptable by every agency, levels of service C and D. As you can see here, this is the seconds that we're talking about. As you can see here, this is the seconds that we're talking about. So fifteen to twenty-five seconds is a C, twenty-five to thirty-five is a D. We looked at the AM and PM peak hours and they operated at a level of service C in the morning, a level of service B in the afternoon peak hour. And again, that's an average over the entire peak hour. And then in the mid-time, during the school dismissal, overall, it operated with a C. However, for that ten-minute period of time, it was essentially gridlocked, but then as I said, it dissipated after that. So after we evaluate the existing operating conditions, get a baseline, then we layer on the existing, or the site-generated traffic for Casey's. As you can see here, it's expected to generate eighty-nine vehicles in the morning in and out, one hundred eleven in the PM peak hour in and out. One thing to note is, based on the land use, approximately sixty percent of these are called pass-by trips. And that means that these are people that are already on the traffic stream in Route One, they're not new traffic to Route One. So these are the people that are traveling to another destination and while they're already on Route One, they decide to turn in and then come back out. So only forty percent of these are actually new vehicles on Route One, so you can see these relatively low volumes. I won't get into the distribution, we've talked about that a lot in the last couple of meetings. This reflects what our estimates are of how traffic will flow into and out of the site based on two full access points. And as you can see here with the critical approach that we're looking at, in the morning, we're only talking about adding seventeen eastbound lefts, ten eastbound rights, in the morning nineteen eastbound lefts, thirteen eastbound rights. So after we develop the site-generated traffic, we layer that onto the existing volumes and we develop what's called a construction year forecast, just add the two together and develop these numbers here. And again, focusing our attention on the eastbound approach, you can see that the vast majority of the traffic is still going to make an eastbound left turn here. Whereas this equates to, as Pat alluded to, one, one car every two minutes making an eastbound right turn. But then we evaluate the intersection again, graded it, and this still operates at a level of service C. In fact, the, the amount of delay, do you have that number here? Comparing the existing twenty thirteen and then the twenty fourteen construction year, it only increased by an average of two seconds per vehicle over the entire peak hour during the heaviest peak hour, which was the AM. So that's our construction year forecast. I don't know, Bob, if you'd like, if we have open up questions or... The only, the only other evaluation we did too was go a twenty forty scenario also to see what traffic volumes would be in twenty forty, assuming that Casey's was built, assumed a percent growth rate based on some other available information. And we found that with the Casey's by itself, it will still operate within acceptable levels of service. It goes to a level of service D, however, if you can go back to that public service table, just nobody's concerned there. As you can see, twenty-seven seconds is just over the threshold into a D, but it's still within, as we recall, acceptable ranges for design. So that's a, sorry for the speed through there, but trying to cover all the high points. Would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Questions from the board?
I know that you talked about the front of the building, the two sides. What about the lands, or the, the brick on the back of the building? Is that going to be sited or is that going to be brick? Because I think we were told brick at one time.
With, with the fence being there, we'd probably go with steel, so it'd be steel back.
Has that changed or was it always going to be steel?
Well, we make them both ways, but if, if the, the brick only goes up so far as you can see, or if you wouldn't be able to see it anyway, if it was brick.
Of course Scott gets his answer. I've got one question that I've had since I was here for the very first time you guys came to apply for a public hearing. Is I've, I've heard you constantly say three to four foot of brick and every picture you've shown us is a typical one-story eight-foot brick wall. Which is it? It's been alluded to at the public hearing, the request for the public hearing, and here tonight, you say three to four foot, or three to four foot. And every picture that I've been shown.
Go to the side elevation.
Is it typical eight-foot wall elevation?
The top, that door is a six-foot door.
It's a six-foot door?
Yeah.
I agree with John, that's going to be an eight-foot wall.
I'm not, I don't have, I know on the front, it's typically three to four feet. On the side, you're right.
But the picture you showed us, but the picture of the front is eight foot two. It's a typical one-story. It's, those are transit, transom lights above your doors there. And you can see that the height of the door is above the height of the door.
I'm, I'm in error, I, they must have changed the elevation because the last one I did was about a four-foot wall. These are higher, this is the new standard.
So these will be?
This is the new standard. I apologize.
In other words, according to the picture?
Yes.
Okay, and then the back of the building, we still?
Yeah. The back of the building would be steel considering the, the fence back there.
You don't see that.
You're not going to see it anymore.
I understand what you're saying, but at the PZC, it was never indicated that it was going to be steel. And that fence was there all along. The only difference was that based on the public, literally the chief's recommendation was to move the fence up against, or really remove the section of the fence, move it so that the fence coincides with the back of the wall. It was, it's the whole back of the building is all brick. Now we're hearing it's going to be steel because of the fence, but it was never steel before, why is it changing?
Well, it was, as far as the, it was never going to be all brick. Not, not, there's always dry fence in it, but, but the picture that was shown at, at one of these was all steel. But we, we do both, we do both. But for reduction, if we're going to have a fence there, if you're going to have it on the sides, you know, like what was being discussed, then we could do the brick on the back because you're going to see the back. But I, I don't know what the point of doing the, a brick back would be if they're going to have a fence covering it up.
You're still going to see it, you're still going to see it if you drive along the side. You know, when you're down Miller Street, you're going to still be able to see behind that.
Actually, this, this fence wraps up about ten feet. I wrapped the corner up there to, because if you just put a fence out straight, the winds, it's going to start leaning. So I, we started taking it up about ten feet to wrap it around it, kind of give it a lot of extra support so it doesn't just fall over. So that might screen it.
You're saying wrap around, I thought the wraparounds were deleted, Bob. I thought the wraparounds were deleted. You're saying to wrap around the corners of the property where the fences, I thought they were going to take it out. And the next question is, is where, where is the fence? Properties up here, the school property's down here. Is the fence going to be on along the school property, which means your eight-foot fence now went down to a six-foot fence in theory from, from standing at the height of the site? In which case, that's what Scott is getting at.
Right.
Is that bottom line at the back of the building is still going to be in? Probably, point forward question is, would you be willing to continue the facade at the front of the building around to the back of it, which you're getting at?
And is it a six-foot or eight-foot fence? I can't see in the.
Well, it's an eight, what I'm getting at.
Is it an eight-foot fence?
I believe it's an eight-foot fence, but the problem is.
You'd have to zoom into that, that shot there to find out if it's eight or six, because there's one area where you can almost read it, but it, it looks like it's a six-foot.
What I'm getting at is the site is up here.
There's an elevation.
Right, so you're down to it.
Yes.
Right, theory.
What's, what's the height of the fence?
I recall it being six-foot.
Typically, they're six.
Looking at this, it looks like.
And I think we took the wings off.
My understanding is the wings are off.
Because you can't, if the wings are on there, you definitely can't see behind the building. You've got to be able to see behind the building.
I can take this one off, but we were asked to bring it up through here, bring it up next to this side of the dumpster enclosure.
Oh, okay.
The other end was taken off.
I can take that, we can take it off if it's desired to take that off. I'm just concerned about the, I haven't seen winging on the fence.
I was, I was never given any reason why this booth would want to continue this fence along the back. Because interruption achieves the same objective. But the engineer did say that there was a loading bay on the north side and it's still going to have to jet out.
He also said, which we discussed too, that the, the jet out would be a supporting, whatever you just called it, the support of the fence.
Support when it gives it strength.
Which gives it strength, so.
A ninety-degree on the fence is going to give it strength, that's correct. So it jumps back and shoots up the backside of that, that loading bay. You still achieve the idea of having a, 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 a wall separating Casey's from the school property. That's why it didn't make sense that we're going back the other way. It doesn't make sense that you're getting anything better than you had before. In fact, if anything, you're putting the police in more jeopardy of having a vagrant back there.
Those are options of being, they're everywhere at though. That's what the school district busted.
So you have to clarify whether we want the wraparounds or not, that's number one.
All right, what are the wraparounds?
Where the wall, where the fence is winged to the, to the east.
Right there, I got about an eight or, eight or ten-foot section right here, comes down and then it wraps around.
Did the school district prefer the wraparounds, you recall? No, they just wanted a straight fence.
They just wanted a straight fence though, but that's there to provide some support for the side of the wall. So when the heavy winds come, it's not going to blow the fence up.
Do you need eight foot of length to get stability or can you only go two feet? For a six-foot fence, shadow box, you don't even go more than two feet to get support for that wall. It's, it's a cross member, it's providing stability for a cross member. Eight foot is very acceptable. John, you're a builder, what's your thoughts?
I can be sure, I mean, I just did pick eight to ten seconds.
You have a long wall that's free-flowing. So if you come perpendicular with it, that perpendicular section of fencing would have to kick the opposite way in order for that. It's just, it's all structure. I mean, anytime you can make it perpendicular with it, it's going to get strength. I mean, but whatever is desired. I mean, at the same time, you have winds coming out of the west, blowing towards the east.
That's a long fence.
A long fence? You can actually see that, I got really good eyes, but you can actually see the, where the posts are figured in on that fence as they're drawn in. And I would guess they're in four-foot sections or eight-foot?
It's just a line type, to be honest, where they just draw a line and then.
They just pop them in there?
Pop them in there roughly over sixteen.
You have sixteen feet looking down here.
Just an idea, what if on the north side, we came off the building, the property line, went across to here and went four feet? And here, you just go off the building, here and up to here.
That's what I proposed, I'd set a plan.
Put the brick wall on the back.
Yeah, I'd set it that way.
School wants a straight fence.
School wants a straight fence.
Yeah, school wants a lot.
That's what I said.
School wants the fence on the property line.
Then you're going to have full wing walls on it because it makes it a whole.
I'm reading this print, you got fifteen feet between the back of the wall and the fence, correct?
Yes.
Fifteen, one says. Right, you're showing a sixteen-foot wing wall on that fence. Eight foot should be plenty, it'll add a lot of support and you'll still be able to see him. You'll still have line of sight down the back of the building. If you got fifteen feet from the fence to the building, if you're only making an eight-foot wing, you're adding the tonne of stability and you can still see back there.
I also think that the integrity of the building, you know, instead of having a steel rear, I think it should be brick, same as the rest of the building.
So your aesthetics in the back would be the same as the front side, what you're getting at?
You know, you look at the back of the buildings, you know, and it's, you look at that steel siding and that's all you're going to see coming from the school side. I know that the fence goes up to certain level, but the elevation's going to bring it down. And I think if you still see that brick from the side and from the back, I think that's going to look a little bit nicer than steel a little bit. Because I know the one in Mantino, you have all steel in the back, correct?
I, I'm not, I gotta remember.
Okay, but that doesn't look very good, you know, as far as the steel. Yeah, that's, that's my opinion.
John, my problem with the fence, even that distance with two, two wing walls? It's, you're going to need more stability. Shadow, shadow boxing has a lot. That'll save it, but. Well, no, it makes a difference, it's the ability to when they're alternating the sides of those boards, under the giddy of it.
If, if in fact, the fence becomes a problem down the road, because I'm sure we can always ask Casey to put up some other ways. That's going to be a solution I would have, right? In the centers, you would also put up planes, which I don't believe that's logical, but.
Be fine.
He says trust them.
It's no different than a fence across a big backyard. I, I, I understand what Scott's saying with brick, but at the same time, we got the Dollar General right there that's three sides steel. Right there, that's what we're looking at right now. If Casey's doesn't come in, if Casey's were to get denied tonight, that's what we're looking at right there, right now. This three sides of steel with the Dollar General.
The difference is it backs up to the school and you don't really see it that much. Safe of fact. You're seeing one from the north.
You're seeing the north side of the Dollar General, coming up or down Route One.
Just to clarify, the school, the school is attending on asking Dollar, Dollar General to continue that fence to the back of their property as well? Whether or not they follow through or whether or not they have done that, we don't know that, but that was a discussion that's to be had.
I have a question on the, with the filters. Who would be changing those filters on the inlet?
It'd be part of their maintenance program.
Okay, Casey's would be doing that?
Yeah. Actually, I'm thinking the letter, I, I've read that before, but they actually sent me a copy of their maintenance program and what they do for training their drivers for offloading fuel and what they do, so it would be part of that from that store.
Okay.
You, you say that the carbon filters are designed for drips. What happens if there's a large spill that gets into that? How long does that hard, hard carbon filter have before it fails?
I don't know the direct answer for that, but it's not, it's not really set up for that, it is to catch the stuff that collects. You know, when cars come in and they, they'll sit, the radiator's leaking or what have you. It's basically to collect all those pollutants on a normal basis. Major spill, it's not designed for that. They're designed to pick up the everyday stuff that's coming in on the cars and the people, they, the fuel dispensers off, the dispensing machine going to put in the car and there's drips are coming out of that. And when the next rainfall or event comes and it's washed down into the catch base, that's how it picks it up.
So who checks to make sure that the carbon filters aren't saturated?
They're just, it's just a routine maintenance and repair and replace.
Define routine?
Quarterly or semi-anual, whatever the manufacturer requires.
But does the manufacturer know the, the expected leakage you're going to have on site? My, my worry is you're going to have a carbon filter sitting there that you're trusting is going to do the catching and no one's checking to make sure that it's not caused to failure.
I, I have to look at the specs, I mean, I just, last couple we've done, it's just, they've just been done on a quarterly basis, put into the manual, make sure they're checked. It's one of those routine things, you've just got to make sure it's done on a regular basis.
Typically, if the filter's clogged, the manual doesn't take the water.
If, if they clog, I mean, it's, it's a problem, it just means it hasn't been maintained. I mean, you just have to go out there and look at, and it doesn't cover the whole inlet, it's just, it's just a tube that floats around like the first two inches around it, then the rest of the inlet is there for the water, except for runoff. It picks that initial flush, it's the first half-inch rainfall that's what picks up all the pollutants. And those are pretty mild rain. And they come in and just go right over the edge of the catch base, right in through the filter, right through the filter. So like anything else, it's just routine maintenance. I mean, there's not, somebody's going to go out there every week, or two weeks, or quarterly, it just has to be done on a routine basis. You just have to inspect it and check it out. Quarterly or whatever, if it's after that three-month period, you replace it, if it's doing it on a three-month basis. Other than that, you look at, if it looks like it needs to replace, you got to get it replaced. It's all you can do.
Who does the maintenance?
It's going to be Casey's staff.
So the people working on the facility are going to be the ones checking? Or is it a full maintenance group that does this for a basis?
We have a, we have a in-house maintenance for that practice.
Brian Lowes, you got the floor. Any other question now? Scott?
At this point.
Ryan?
Yeah, I'd still say please don't be able to surround the building.
Drive around the building?
Drive around the building. I can't understand, you got fifteen feet back there. Nothing can get back there except individuals on foot or three-wheelers or whatever the case may be. I'd still say it's a trap. Because you got the fence back there and you look at Hueys, you look at Circle K. They can all be driven around by the police. I'd still say it's a trap back there.
No way to put it, drive around?
Not in their current configuration, that's something that Casey's would, you know, have to, three-two or have to get back. Three, two, or I have to get back to their construction staff.
John?
Um, my questions.
Are you? Sir, since you're the only one that made mention of Casey's, and we don't have a long list of people here, do you have anything you would like to answer?
I think most of the issues that I had, uh, any, not a problem with, but I think they've been all addressed, except for the, the third lane on Miller. I, I don't think that the, the added traffic that the patrons of Casey's will add to that entrance to the highway on, from Miller Street have been properly addressed.
You don't think Casey has, and.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think Casey's has properly addressed the added traffic that the patrons of Casey's are gonna add to Miller Street emptying onto Route One, both north and south.
And you don't go that the third lane would solve that?
Oh, yeah, I think the third lane would definitely alleviate the congestion.
And in your favor, we need your name and your answers for the.
I'm Gordon Wilson, this is my wife Frida, and we live at nine twenty-five, I've just.
Thank you for coming.
You know, you had mentioned that you had a drawing with that third lane.
Basically, the way it was described to me the last time is it'd be looking to have a right turn lane, that again, right turn lane constructed to the end of the entrance and tapering back to the existing lane, that's just kind of what we've come up with. Basically, this lane here, it constructed would adequately hold four right turning vehicles at any one time. But as we've mentioned before, on, on the average, during the peak hour, there's one right turn vehicle on a two minute, on a two minute average. So you would never see more than one car sitting here at any one time. So, you know, it's based on that, I mean, a typical car sits in a twenty foot space, I mean, there's almost ninety, I think it's ninety five feet set up there. So, basically, there can be a lot of pavement built that's never really used.
I actually have a question, so when it gets to the point with gridlock, and you've got a lot of people making left turns, feasibly, some of those cars wouldn't even be able to make it to the right turn lane because the left turn is.
Correct, they're gonna block that, correct.
And that, that's called starvation of the turn lane, so, yeah, even though it's provided.
Correct, they can't get to it.
Exactly.
And I think it was at the plan commission meeting where you said that the semi is going to turn out onto Miller Street, and, and that you were gonna taper, taper your entrance?
That was a pre, that was.
Part of the turn lane, no?
Well, yeah, it'd be part of the turn lane, but originally, uh, let's see, where do we go? Right here, this is tapered so that the trailer, as it would exit, would stay on the pavement. Basically, you know, he's going into this lane here, that's would be as a dual left and dual right turn lane. Now, and the other option, when we, back to here, obviously because the tanker truck is so long. When he comes out, he's actually gonna be turning into this lane before he can get all the way out like you typically see them do, but the trailer is still gonna trail through this location here and not hit the curb or the sidewalk. I mean, he needs to use both, both of those in order to make the right turn and go south on Dix, which is pretty typical because of their length.
So you're gonna be adding asphalt to that for the.
Yeah, that's all.
Cars turning out?
If, if this option is what, this is all new pavement, right through here. I didn't hatch it under our, I didn't think about hatching it, but basically, this is the edge of the existing travel lane, if you extended that straight through, so everything right in here would be all new pavement. Yeah, the driver, that's correct, the driver would be concrete, yeah. The new travel lane would be asphalt to match what's within the public right of way, since that's the village's responsibility.
So, do you have to relocate the existing sidewalk?
It has to be reconfigured through here, in order to make that work, right of way has to be given up in order to get the sidewalk to make, make sure it stays within the public right of way. The crosswalk here would still be in the same alignment, it's just gonna come back south about fourteen feet. We're gonna have to rework that whole thing, entire sidewalk along this length has to be reconstructed in order to make that work.
There's some, there's some cost.
Right.
Were your signs out there too, some of them?
It was pulled back.
Island sign is right here, actually, I didn't move it, but with this configuration, we have to be twenty five feet, so it's gonna come back a little bit more.
So that, is that gonna stay on the road, is it the last being that's moved towards the road?
No, uh, unless I misunderstood, we just made sure it was outside that twenty five foot, cite this as a triangle, unless I misunderstood your comment.
Outside of usability.
I mean, the, the sign is gonna come in as a separate smill from the site plan, so we, so you can work directly with Casey's on that.
There was an issue with the size of the sidewalk that resulted, was that gonna come up?
That'll come with a, a sign package.
Couldn't we go back over though, and address the issue by the resident of the expected load that's gonna be coming off of Casey's? Can you go back over your traffic study again? John, you have a question?
I, I was kinda going to think thing here, is that. When you, you're showing these rights, this big increase of rights onto eastbound Miller.
Part of right here.
You do have access right onto Route One, correct?
Down here.
So, somebody. Yeah, so there, there is an entrance onto Route One, southbound. So a car would not have to pull out of Casey's, get in line to turn right. A car would not have to, eh, get onto Miller to turn right and head south on Route One.
They could come out to Zexit.
They're, they're gonna come right out that and enter directly onto Route One.
Right, they, they could do that if they, if they desire, but the, the traffic splits, like Nate mentioned earlier, is based on existing traffic distribution, so. You split them out, the entrances with that same distribution, you know, if forty percent of your traffic is coming out of here, forty percent of your traffic from Casey's, you assign, assign to that entrance, the other sixty to the other one, it's based on the existing distribution of traffic flow right now.
Even though most people would not drop out to go.
Yeah, there's always that, I mean, it's, it's, it's our best assumption in putting the study together, where it's going based on what's currently out there on, on the roadway.
Just, just for one clarification, uh, hopefully to put your, put your mind at ease, when we develop the traffic forecast, we use nationally, nationally use, uh, it's called the IT Trip Generation Manual Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they do, they've done studies since nineteen sixties, and they continually update that, and we base that on the square footage of the proposed site. So that's where we came up with the overall numbers, and the benefit of this site is that we have two full access entrances. Let's say that, um, maybe the entrance off of Miller, for whatever reason, was the only point of egress, that would definitely make the eastbound right turn at Miller increase, but since we're able to split that in between two entrances, that's why it's a little bit noticeably less.
Any other question?
Well, we didn't, um, really address, I mean, are they willing to do some of these things, like what Ron had mentioned and.
I'm going, I'm going to have to assume that whatever the vote is tonight, based on the stipulations, you would have to go back to corporate, corporate will have to make decisions on the conditions that are not covered in the letter.
That's correct. If you were to build, what's your timeframe? Uh, would this construction be during the summer when school's not in, or? What is the timeframe?
It, it typically takes, uh, about four months ago, so, whoever, the starting point would be, would basically be in the summer.
With the stables.
If the fence stays on the property line, Ron would.
But we don't currently.
We have to drive around the schools.
We have to drive around most gas stations, I think.
You didn't have it around. Paulman's, you didn't have it around any of the original gas stations that were in town for years.
How many years ago was that?
It doesn't matter, I'm just saying.
Sure it matters, time changes.
If we're looking for, for the capability of having the police go around buildings, then we need to make that a stipulation as part of our ordinances, cause right now, the school system doesn't have it on any of their buildings where it's contiguous for the, for the police to go all the way around the buildings. You don't have it at any of the original gas stations in town that were there for years. I mean, I'm looking at consistency, you don't have it around where the old Aurelios was. So consistently, we're asking for a requirement that was never stipulated by any of the buildings we have in town.
Years ago, we had two, two bay gas stations too, we're at day now. Things changed.
You had, you had three, but I'm saying, right now, that stipulation to say the police need to get back there, I don't see the consistency in the village, cause on that photo right now on the screen, the only reason why there's a parking lot there is because the school was expanded, but the road never went all the way back to Miller. So they could never, if you're looking for, just for that, you could never get there. And you, you don't have it at the new school that was built as the junior high.
You know, it's somewhere here next to where you.
You know, I've gotta honestly say, and this isn't, this isn't even up to Casey's, this is almost between us and the school, I really liked the idea of getting the fence winged out from both sides of the building, put brick on the back of the building, and not have the fence back home in feet.
I agree.
And I know that's the school district.
I thought that's where we were at.
I know that was the school district that requested it, but I really would have liked it the other way, because it would have allayed all the problems, you don't have to worry about the siding on the back of the building, it could be brick, doing the fences on the side, you don't have any hiding, you're on the side. And I know that's a school district issue, not theirs.
Truthfully, it's whatever this board decides tonight, then we would take it back to the school and explain our reasoning behind it. Which is the reason why we had the wings, it sounds like to me Casey's would do a lot of the way. So if I understand it correctly, you have three items tonight? That the side all the way around the building, the fence, which we could figure out down the road. And what was the third one?
Brick on the neck wall.
That's the facade all the way around the building.
You got the turn lane issue.
And the turn lane issue, which, again, was what a part of the motions. Does anybody like to make motion?
Uh, we have an ordinance in front of us, you can either vote on it or change it, I don't know what motion you'd be making. An ordinance, granting a special use permit and a finding of fact, we have to endorse a finding of fact, and pass your special use permit, we can deal. So if you wanna change the ordinance, we have to look. Tim is here tonight to explain what we drafted, section two, conditions one through seven, are what currently is included in the ordinance. This is based on the P and D recommendations. And as you can see, the number five doesn't really say your offensive. Yeah, I would prefer, I agree with Mark, I prefer off the main building, I don't know why we're running a four foot. Fence all the way across the back, I, I just.
It's gonna create a traffic.
Yeah, I mean, Tim's come up with another modifying thing where you could run it all the way across your property line, but then attach it to the building on one end, and then bring it around as a courtyard on the other with a gate, and then isolate that area from public access. You could do that. But if I had a choice of brick or, or solid fence across the back, I know which way I would pick, you know?
And I think the wing walls, um.
I agree, I think the issue you're gonna have is right now, if you do this, the wings going out, going to the road, probably your dust back, coming off the building. That way you don't have that big wall of, of fence there, that's of no use.
And no hiding.
Well, yeah, I mean, the original idea, why the police brought that up, made sense, when we were sitting at that meeting, it made all the sense in the world why they did that.
And the ordinance you have before you tonight does have installation of fence, which has not been issued, and has is approved by the village administrator, I did ask the board president if you wanted that, he said no, village administrator can do that, but, yeah, sorry. Uh, so that could be walked out.
No, I three hundred plus it, I did.
But if it doesn't seem like that's an issue from the petitioner's aspect, it's simply a matter on our side and some working with the neighbor there, so, um, that has enough discretion in the ordinance to still require it, uh, but yet to address the concerns that have been heard tonight, uh, and then also maybe some.
And in all fairness, when we discussed this with the school, we thought that the fence was creating more of a problem the way it was suggested, that trying to solve a problem, in all fairness, if it was only one individual, we didn't take it back, I don't know, we went back to the entire board or whatever made the decision. So, bottom line is that, just like Tim was saying, I think it's something that we can discuss and go from there, based upon the concerns of the board.
Well, according to this, it says Casey's will work with the school board on a fence location.
Are you looking at the finding of facts, or?
I'm always looking at the letter from Casey's.
Tim has one question to Casey's, if you don't, if you have, whether you have a fence or not, are you putting lights in back of this building?
You can also figure something else, we like to push the school away, you know, make something work. The school, I said? Or, and he got a touch.
I don't know why, hey, great, I don't know why, there's gonna be a fence there.
Let's go through these, uh, conditions, one at a time, and Charles is looking at the same document, the ordinance that is handed out tonight, not longer package. Uh, the conditions are as follows, installation of hydrocarbon filter system on the catch basin. Uh, for connection to the village storm sewer system, the screen patrolling based products entering the system. Number two, installation of fire alarm system with direct connections in Eastbound Dispatch Center. Number three, the petitioner shall knowingly hire, shall not knowingly hire, but continue employment of any registered sex offenders at the premises. Number four, pornographic materials are prohibited from being sold on the premises, pornographic materials, uh, it has a definition here of what that is, is that what is concerning Casey's. Uh, number five, installation of a fence at the rear of the building to separate premises from neighboring school property as approved by the village administrator. Number six, addition, installation, and improvement of a dedicated right turn lane on Miller Street to allow curbing of these four vehicles to be completed subject to I-DOT review and approval, and that design up there allowed for four to two, that you show?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's modified for you.
Okay, and then seven, substantial compliance with the petitioner's submitted plans, including site plan, landscaping, and building materials that it covers. Um, a couple things here, if, if we approve this as presented, if it is approved, uh, number six, uh, would be a requirement for the right turn lane. The question of how that gets paid for can be addressed at a subsequent meeting, okay? They've, they've said, well, we won't pay for half of it. The issue that I don't see in one through seven is whether or not that rear wall is gonna be brick. I can't remember those, they didn't actually. It was originally red wall. So your, your interpretation is this would require a brick wall?
It was discussed brick also, I remember that coming up, Dave, while, while it was going on.
So you're talking brick on the rear wall.
Well, the brick and driving is the continuation that's.
That, that same.
Right, so there's no confusion to that same period.
And that was, that was testimony that was presented after the public hearing in front of the.
That's a flat.
Correct, that was clarified tonight.
I'm not sure the exact height, but it's closely, but I'd have to.
Yeah, not, not three to four, closer to eight, it's going above, you have that, every picture had, every picture had a course of.
You're right.
A soldier course up above the door, so you're getting at least six inches above the seven foot door.
But I'm not sure the exact height.
Mm-hmm. Now, the only question I would have would be in the number six, um, Bob, you said we could figure out how to pay for it in a, another meeting, um. It's, yeah, I mean, I would wanna know how we're gonna pay for it, and paying for something that we have traffic engineers sitting here telling us that's not needed. My question would be for the attorney, is that a stipulation you could put into where if ten years down the road, it's needed, you could go to them for help on it then, it was a one shot and done feel, because I, I still, I.
You can place whatever reasonable conditions you want on it, so you could do something in the future, it's always difficult to put what those triggering events are.
Yeah, cause I, 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 I know the funds, I mean, these funds are public works funds, and, I mean, we're, we're struggling to find ways to, to pave roads in town that residents live on, that are in front of their houses, and to fix these roads. And we're on a ten year schedule, but hopefully, maybe make a decent amount of repairs in some of these older sections, and then to turn around and put twenty five thousand dollars towards a turn lane that I have traffic engineers telling me I don't need, I know that anybody that wants to, any Casey's traffic, that's gonna come out of Casey's traffic, that wants to go southbound, that you would need that right hand turn lane for, is gonna be exiting. go southbound, that you would need that right-hand turn lane for, is gonna be exiting directly onto Route One, out of their lot. They wouldn't wanna wait diverge, Jim, they wouldn't wanna go there waiting line where they literally access right out. I really don't wanna go against PZC either, they've spent a lot of time on this, and the...
I remember, right?
But I don't remember somebody from planning and zoning saying, I, I remember Bob putting it out there, but I don't know how many of their yes votes to pass this to us were contingent on that.
I have to admit too, I think, when you come all the way by Haley's, you've got a right turn lane, you've got that middle lane, it is sometimes borderline disastrous, because I lived right over there, and you try to make a right turn, somebody on the left is sitting there edged out, you can't even see traffic, you're sticking your nose out and semis coming along, it's...
Yeah, I...
I'm not convinced that that right turn lane...
I mentioned it to Marcy, I asked neighbors, usually what I try to do, I ask friends and neighbors and stuff on their opinions on some of that stuff, and, you know, my one neighbor, Bill, sat there and told me, you're in that right-hand turn lane, you can't see the traffic coming from your lot, if things are queued up, that many cars D, you have a hard time sometimes seeing what's coming at you to make that right lane, and he goes, he goes, so what do you do? I said, I don't know, I inch out a little bit and kinda see what's coming, so I can kinda get in front of that car and see if I can make my right turn lane. He said inch out in front of an eighteen wheeler, see how that works for you. You know, and that's something I thought about too, you know, it, it's gonna be a safer entrance directly out of their lot.
Two comments though, I believe at least at the PZC, the question was asked, would the turn lane, and I believe it was to the engineer, would the turn lane help the flow of traffic? Traffic's already there, we understand it, and I believe you answered, yes, it would help the flow. I understand what you're saying, it doesn't call for it, but would it help the flow?
I, I believe what I tried to convey was that it adds capacity to the roadway, anytime you add a road, anytime you add a lane to any facility, it adds capacity to that roadway. What we were trying to convey, and if I didn't do that appropriately, I apologize, but even though you, it, it helps capacity, almost as the gentleman was looking to, it's not really needed. What we would typically do in this case, I guess just go to a quick hierarchy, i- if this, if this intersection had a failing movement, and if a right turn lane would make that acceptable level of service, that would trigger us recommending a right turn lane. The next layer down would be, if it was still an acceptable level of service or a high D, almost on an E, and if we put a right turn lane in there and it knocked it down all the way down to a B, then that, we would definitely encourage discussion, bring that up and say that there's potential that doing this could significantly reduce delays. However, in this case, the software that we use and every other traffic engineer uses as well, is that when we add that second, uh, add that right turn lane in there, that only decreases the overall approach delay by two seconds, because the eighty percent of the people are still making that left, we're talking about, again, one car every, every two minutes. So that's why it's not significantly reducing the overall delay of that approach, because your delay is for your left turn.
Okay, and then the other point, does any other new business that has come in along Route One, we've put in a third lane? Now granted, we haven't had anything in a long time, it waltz, actually, it's both sides of Waltz, it's probably both of them.
Waltz has an entire subdivision behind you.
Yeah, I know.
Which causes that more traffic.
Waltz and, uh, the other one was bigger now.
All right, I'll do it, uh, I'll make a motion. Proving an ordinance granting a special use permit for a gas station in a mini market at seven thirty Dixie Highway, southwest corner of Miller and Dixie. With all the conditions being met minus number six. And that it is eight foot of brick, and that the fence comes directly off the building with the wings like we like.
I'll second that.
Discussion or questions?
Is your ordinance done?
Does everybody understand what we're going in? For call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Golden?
No.
Capers?
Yes.
Scheyer? Yes. Aaron? No. Larry?
Yes.
All right, I didn't make any changes to my ordinance, I wanted to make sure that the gas wasn't doing these changes, so...
Temp down, I trust we're good.
You got it?
Eliminate six, wing fence, brick wall.
Yeah, there's no fence, but I, I still wanna see, you know, the school board and...
Meeting with Dan's, Dan might send you one.
I've sent you what I sent, yes, I think it's what you guys just talked about, so you know what I sent him before, okay, I don't have it. Basically, it's coming off the building and coming around the loading room. Do you have a copy? I've got this one, but not the, uh, not with all the changes. He's in the one, don't have the changes.
Let's take five minutes, hold eight.
Yeah, eliminate six.
Building department monthly report and the annual report from the building department of the cultural history.
All that, just for the... All right, reports of village commissions, beautification commission.
Okay, um, we have a new member who joined, Jan Ramshorse, I believe that's how she pronounces her last name, she lives on Ashland Avenue, and she, um, is pretty geared up to get into it and get really involved. Um, we had discussion about, um, the hanging baskets, the colors, and the flowers that we're gonna be selecting, and we're having a meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock at the village hall. For next meeting.
I got two questions, first of all, do we need to appoint this new commissioner?
Yes, we would, I would ask for a letter from Steve.
I asked Steve to send it to you, did you get it?
So when we do get it, we'll back there for it.
Second of all, there might still be time to change the flower order, but we were in same colors as last year. No?
Because we haven't selected the colors we wanted yet.
I was told that, you guys told us that we weren't supposed to select colors.
Listen to them right there. Straight to jail.
Well, right. Spray paint works well, quick, just paint it.
There might, there might be time.
Well, we were gonna select the colors at our next meeting, because we weren't sure if we were going with purple and yellow, or red, white, blue, or which of the people last year.
You'll figure it out, I need to know like soon before the...
Well, we're having our meeting tomorrow night, so...
Okay, mid-February is when they start in the greenhouse.
There seems to be a little miscommunication, we'll try and narrow it up.
You'll, you'll make the minister aware of those signings tomorrow, maybe?
And I'm gonna try and convince the commission to want red, white, blue.
Well, it's where it was for last year, I have no idea, I couldn't even tell you, but they had it listed for the color. Was it red, white, blue?
Whatever.
What, in front of the community?
Did you order the sixty-five?
No, that's, we're only budgeted for fifty-seven, but we had three missing, so we ordered sixty. We only have fifty-seven baskets. Isn't that correct, Bob?
Yep, they had it for two months.
Well, one was stolen, and then we had two extra hooks, so we ordered sixty, that's what we got. Last year only existed sixty.
Well, I, this was my notes, I got all my notes.
There were sixty-five, I thought there were like seventy.
We'll, we'll, we'll work it out from there.
Okay, good.
Anything else?
Yes.
No, you can't have plastic, Jim. Fourth of July, commission fifty-one.
Big requests have gone, have gone out to eight local dealers on, uh, two thousand hits, eight Fourth of July cars, we're waiting them to come back with their bits of new cars.
You commission fifty-first?
Um, we had our open bowling on January twentieth, we had, um, over two hundred and fifty kids that came out and bowled that day between the hours of nine AM, and like the last time, it was five fifteen, we were done and out of there, so, long day, very long day. Um, and we have, this Saturday, we have our annual daddy-daughter dance, so that should be a big to-do. And that's the twentieth, and then March eighth, we have, uh, the monsoon.
Yes. Revival of hope, fifty-one, I'm sorry, revival of hope, commission.
Yeah, uh, we had our last meeting, uh, which was on January twenty-fifth, uh, talked a lot about fundraisers and bingo nights and, and, uh, a lot of different things, so, we're always looking for, uh, ways to make money. Uh, we're still just a hair over eight thousand dollars in our, uh, account, and we're still looking for more, so if anybody wants to donate, or knows anybody who wants to, uh, throw some money in, we're always open for that. Uh, we also had a booth over at the Tractor's for Cure over in, uh, Piattum Saturday night, I don't know what the details or how that went, but I know that they had a decent table set up with, with information, brochures and, and different things like that, so, that's my report.
Finance and administration, I think we're...
Okay, we start with the, uh, commission and the village accounts on the first page here, we're down one hundred, one hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, village accounts month over month, um, primarily in the general fund, there was three payroll periods in January, which helped cause that, uh, when it happens two times a year. So it's one of the, one of the changes there, we, water bill collections were coming in, so all in, and so we made a bond payment, uh, quite significant changes up there. Uh, down below in the commission accounts, the Fourth of July, uh, looks like we had some bank deposits and, and other small bowling, um, flagpole replacement, I think, or some of the expenditures, and some of the beautification, uh, finish-ups there, wall, uh, some of the paybacks and whatnot, so, it's kind of a typical month, nothing, nothing special probably, other than the bond payment, which happens once a year. The Dix, the six twenty-five Dixie accounts were highlighted separately, really had no activity, we had the interest we earned last month, uh, and that was the only activity in January, so, we're still sitting on our two hundred and sixty-nine thousand for our, our total and our budget. You can see the, the trend sheets, um, under the, uh, the graph here, um, and really we're following the trends from previous years, we're a little bit down based on the purchase, go of purchase, um, but, nothing unexpected, what, what we anticipated happening has happened. And then you have your, uh, commission checks and the payments that were made outside of the accounts payable, we're on the habits of the village, um, some of the items are the previous, uh, commission items that we, we looked at on the first page, uh, the payrolls, uh, the joint fuel account, essentially, to make up a primary, most of your, of your charges here, so, once again, nothing unusual, I don't believe, uh, kind of business as usual. So we have any questions? Call me? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nelson also included in, as part of the treasurer packet, uh, his annual budget for two thousand and fourteen for the Fourth of July, uh, festival, uh, it's pretty detailed, and I would expect nothing less from Nelson. I believe he's satisfied us with the numbers here, uh, but what I, uh, I can have him speak to, what if you guys have questions on it? But I believe what he's done and set forth, uh, in, in the different categories, the expected incomes, the outflows, uh, and your expected results, uh, I think you predict the weather as well as do his budget, I think you guys would be in good shape, because I know it's a big factor. But Nelson, you wanna speak to it for a minute?
Just that, uh, I, I realize how much you are too interested in the past numbers as maybe I am, so I boxed off the, uh, two columns there that are most important, I think. One is the budget, this budget has been approved, uh, by the commission. So these are the, uh, the next to the last column, budget two thousand and fourteen, that, uh, is the budget we're working under, and then the last column is the year-to-date expenses. And, uh, the first four columns there are the actuals from the previous four years, uh, two thousand and ten, two thousand and thirteen, if you want to compare. And, uh, I'll keep, uh, getting this to you each month, so you'll see the changes in the year-to-date, and it's the only column that will make changes. I will box them in and, uh, follow, right hand column is the one you want to watch, and see how it compares to the budget.
Your year-to-date, that's what you've spent so far, you've spent more than you budgeted, is that totaling correctly? Your last column shouldn't have been a lot less than...
The last column has two or three entries in it, the one at the top says, uh, two thousand and fourteen year-to-date, so we only spent, uh, a total of, uh, thirty-three hundred dollars.
What I'm saying is, right now, your, your balance to date, which you're budgeting for is a hundred and three thousand, and you spent a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and nine cents. I think what that should be doing is rolling up to your budget that you're expecting, so that, your summing on that last column should be what you're spending, not, and you're, you should be comparing that to your budget, unless that's really the number.
That's your, that's the checking account, right?
That's a checking account.
But then why, but then why is, if that's, if that's your checking account, why is that higher than your budget? Because that's gonna be what you spent to date, that's your year-to-date number, otherwise it's a prestigious number. Do you understand what I'm saying, Jason?
I'm not sure which number you're picking up.
I'm, I'm looking at your top column, okay? Right now, your, your, your budget is a hundred and three thousand, you spent year-to-date a hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and nine cents.
No, that was the, uh, that was the budgeted carryover, that was the budgeted balance at the beginning of the year, and actually, our balance was a little bit higher. That, that's the beginning balance, January one, that's about the money today, uh, we had in the account. So what we were budgeting was, because the, the budget was prior to the, uh, January state, so we budgeted, we were gonna have a hundred and three thousand dollars carryover from, in the account. Actually, we had a hundred, three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six carryover, so we carried over a little more than what we were expecting. That make sense?
Well, when I, when I look at this, when I'm looking at budget and I'm seeing year-to-date, that's my expense point, so it should be under a hundred and three thousand dollars, so this should be rolling up. One should be, one should be, this is our budget, the other should be, we're working our way to that budget point.
That's, that's, uh, that top line won't change, that's, that's income that we were starting with. Those are numbers that we had January first, so those two numbers will not change. But it does get reflected at the bottom line, because we're using that money against the expenses, at the bottom of the report on, on page four. But those two, those two numbers are what we were predicting and what they actually were, and they, those two numbers will stay the same through the entire year, they won't That make sense, sir?
What's, what's the difference between protective, reserve, and available funds? If I understand, what's the difference between the protective, reserve, and available funds?
We, uh, protect our money, we, uh, protect to, uh, the chief of, of workshop, we can pay our bills, so we definitely should have used that. And after we deduct, then, uh, that's what money...
So if they wanna build a beer stand, we technically only have forty thousand, right? And as we buy a higher earnings, that number moves down.
Right, but then you're gonna just wait income. And if we had, uh, had, go to year of last year, we're in a great shape. We did fantastic last year.
Long as it doesn't snow.
Well, yeah.
As long as it doesn't snow.
Figured in the piles of snow down there at the park, or? I don't know, they'll be clear by June. As long as you get them hot cars.
I think, I think we need Jonathan Gex from...
Nope, that is staying up, man. That's in July, so be it. Work around it.
I have a question, Kim, on your commission checks and payments made in January.
Okay.
I see you have these in the negative, and then you have a negative check total.
Do I got a grand total?
A grand total.
Right.
What, where, what... What, where, what is the, the balance in that account?
Well, this is an accumulation of all accounts. Does, as you look through, you've got the Fourth of July, beautification, central, general, right? So, what I'm listing here is the expenses that came out of every one of those accounts.
Okay.
So, back on the front page, you've got the net balances after, you know, if you pick an account, general, or one of, you've got five hundred and nineteen thousand in there. That's the net result of the income that went in, and then whatever DAP bills might have been paid out. But, now also these general charges that you see under general. What I'm only listing in front of you here is, is like the bills, when you get the monthly bills.
Okay.
This is like the monthly bills.
Okay.
That you were to be approving, but you guys don't get a chance to accept now, to take a look at them.
Let's pick the beautification columns as an example.
Sure.
Yeah.
You have twelve hundred and forty-three dollars in expenses.
Yeah.
But, you look at the front report, Gale, and it shows a minus six seventy-four. That's because it took your expenses and then added in your revenues for that month. So, your actual balance is four thousand twenty-nine, that's what you've got as your.
Okay, gotcha.
As a payment.
Yeah, it's not showing your deposits, it's only showing your expenses.
Because this is all the checks that's.
Right. He had netted a minus six seventy-four on one, and then his balance is four thousand twenty-nine.
Okay.
He's required by law to list all the expenses for you to review and approve. And that's what that report's doing, and with the parentheses, it can see. It didn't have the parentheses on her.
Yeah, I'm like, where all this comes from the negative?
Right, right, right. Well.
Well, and again, it, it states checks and payments, so he's showing that it's, it's money going out, so it's a negative.
Okay.
Something to be clearer for you, let me know.
No, that's fine.
Any other questions to the treasurer? I make a motion approving the treasurer's report and the report of financial activity for the prior month.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes?
Karen?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 Various reports were also included for our review, part of our board packet. The bills are also in front of us, and were sent to us under separate cover by email. Any questions?
There's only a couple, Brian, a couple comm ed bills and an echo cam bill, and I think that was by. The only unusual bill I think in here is probably the ninety-nine hundred dollars we spent on the new pump for position number one in the wet wells, which were scheduled to be sold next week.
Weather permitting.
Don't worry. I'll make sure they know they're paying.
Any questions concerning the bills? I make a motion approving the bills for the month of January two thousand fourteen in a total of a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, finally, an ordinance we can deal with on the commissions for the treasurer. This ordinance is concerning Title III, chapters three through seven pertaining to the commissions of the village. The issue we had in front of us was concerning how the village treasurer had to interface with a lot of the commissions. The village attorney went through, cleaned a lot of this stuff up to kind of get us posted where we are before, where the, the village treasurer and deputy treasurer are fully engaged with all the commissions. And it's kind of reverting back the way we were before. There's petty cash that still remains for small reimbursements for a lot of the commissions that would be approved last year. So, we finally have a treasurer's portion of the ordinance that's going to be completed. Anything you want to add, Tim?
I'm just excited that it's up to me.
This was so under the.
There it is. I didn't say approved yet, I said I'm excited it's up to me.
This was like defense ordinance, I'm telling you. Beast.
You mean, we're going to come back to this again?
No.
No, no, no.
Vote on it.
Your treasurer, your deputy treasurer, your attorney, your village administrator, and your village president are all on board with this current track. Took us long to get there, but we're there. Any comments concerning this phenomenal work done by those guys? We're being, I make a motion, amend the ordinance number.
Number five.
Number five. Amending Title III, chapters three through seven pertaining to the commissions of the village.
Second.
A motion on the floor, and there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 And the last item we have on our list for me is concerning the change of village board dates. Haven't heard anything else. The options we have are leaving it on the first or the second Monday. Doesn't seem like many people want to move it to Tuesday. The other option is to make it the fourth Monday, which does not coincide with the school board, and that also allows us to allow the residents to attend our meeting. I would prefer if we're not going to move the date, then it's on a Monday, make it the fourth Monday, regardless if there's a holiday, it's what it is. We need overflow, we'll go into the four, the second Monday of the following month. That way, we allow the residents to attend our board meetings. And that way, we're still on the same dates we've all agreed to, it's just we're not on the second, we're on the fourth.
Is there a problem with paying bills?
That would be, yeah, that's something. That's something we've got to deal with the attorney, I review all the bills before they're even gone out, so. That's something the attorney's going to have to go through.
I don't have a problem changing the week, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
So, the fourth Monday would be the regular meeting, if needed, the second Monday would be the, the.
Like, the second Monday of the following month would be the overflow.
Which is our, I think it's the same thing, only just.
Which is shifting the dates.
One would just take effect.
Right now, well, the attorney's got to decide how we're going to deal with bills.
Yeah.
That's got to get finalized.
We're already having a regular meeting the fourth Monday in April. We have a meeting fourth Monday in March, but that's the workshop on budget.
You'd have to, you'd have to start it at, at the next fiscal season.
Yeah, I would do it in April. If that's what you want to do, then we have to figure out how we're going to get the bills paid.
Tim's got to go through that.
Yeah.
For a lot of some information.
I would suggest that if the orders let us do that, pay the bills like we are now, you guys just vote on that list two weeks after the fact, after the bills go out. I already have the. They ratify, but the chairman of finance signs all.
Signs all the bills anyways.
I, I, I don't know how else we could do it. To me, it's archaic that we have to approve a bill the fourth, but I, the city of Chicago can't be operating that way, I mean, there's no way. I don't know how we can modify our ordinance and still need state law to pay the bills. I mean, all the commission bills get, kind of get paid after the fact, anyway. Is that correct?
Prove that.
Prove that.
Yeah, prove that.
Do we have that many residents that want to attend the board meetings?
It's hard to tell, because right now, you've got a school board meeting going on right now.
Yeah.
And they have, they should have the right to go to our meetings.
Right now, there's a school board meeting where all the results of the survey that they asked residents to take are being revealed.
And the bill.
As far as their search for.
I, I, I think it's important that the residents have an option, whether they are wanting to go today, next month, next year, ten years from now. It's options. I said it numerous times before, there's five taxing bodies in this town that are on our tax bill, they're on your property tax bill, so they should be important to everybody. And for two of those entities to meet the same day of a month, when you have an entire month to choose from, for all these entities to meet, you have six of them that hold regular board meetings, taxing bodies, and for two of them to meet on the same days, it's not bad. I don't think it's right for the residents.
Scott, you said you don't have a problem with the fourth Monday, right?
No.
Fourth and plug, prime, doesn't make any difference, right?
No problem.
Okay, trying to figure this out personally.
No, okay, but I just, I mean, I don't see the. We're not flooding here with residents, and we haven't for how many years, all of a sudden, we're worried about that.
They're your constituents, they have the right to come if they want to.
They do, they do have a right to come.
But, they, and if they want to go to the school board meeting, they've got to decide which taxing body they're going to go to. And we're already on the second and, and fourth Monday, we're not even shifting dates, we're just shifting what day we're going to add in the month.
Right, the, the only other possible complication I could see is if the PZC holds a hearing and makes a recommendation on Thursday night, and our meeting is Monday night, that gives us Friday, turn that around, or we'll have to wait another five weeks. If the PNZ stays on the fourth Thursday. A lot of times, your fourth Monday will follow the fourth Thursday. We used to have that problem, we met twice, because the Fisher lot, you got that board agenda right away, and I'd say, no, you got to wait until the second Monday, because that's just too quick of a term. But, now, if we only meet the fourth Monday, and let's take example Casey's, if, if it fell the right way, they would have to wait five weeks for their motion. And I don't know if that's a problem, I don't care. If you start moving meetings around, you're running the same problem, one day you're going to inflict.
You still have, right now, currently, ordinance, our ordinance, this is by ordinance, says that we meet the second and fourth Monday, right? Right now, we choose to postpone the fourth Monday meeting. What we're looking to do is postpone the second Monday meeting and meet on that fourth. If there was an issue, Bob, where there is something that drastic and that big that comes up, and it can't wait the five weeks, it can easily go until that second Monday, which would be no different, and you call the meeting.
Who makes that decision, the mayor?
Yeah, I would think if the mayor, if, if.
Because there's a guy with a fence variance, he's going to think his variance is just as important as the something, you know what I mean? You want to do that.
Well, what, what's going to happen if we go back to two, two Mondays a month? Then what Monday are we going to go with the other one? We go back to two meetings a month? Where, where, where are we going to go with this other Monday?
Right now, April is about the only month we meet twice, because of the budget.
And the only reason why we cut back is because of agenda items once, when, when agenda items begin to pick up again, if they ever pick up again, then we're back to the second, fourth Monday.
Well, I think you'll get a flavor for, you know, if we go a couple months, you get a flavor for if people are going to show up, or if, you know, whatever the case may be, you know, give them an opportunity to come for a couple months.
The school board meeting is over.
Yeah.
They, if, by Columbus Day, we have a meeting, but don't move there, it's because they, they're not allowed by state law to have a meeting on the day when there's no school.
And they shift, they shift it, there's all the way Wednesday.
Columbus Day meeting to Wednesdays. I know that's a big one.
I, I think the village board's been meeting on Monday nights longer than the school board, right?
I have no idea, I know we moved ours to Tuesday night for four or five years. That's actually a lot of all, for the same issue, and then you guys move it back. We go meet on Tuesday nights here for a while. You were with that, you know, I guess. We also used to meet at eight o'clock, we moved it back to seven.
We moved it seven years, well, now eight years ago. It was a different night when we first were elected.
Yeah, we didn't see that much of a.
But, they still should, I mean, it's not the, it's the same things coming up every day. Every board meeting is not, if you look at all the agenda items we do for the entire month, entire year of two thousand thirteen, and you look at those, the, the agenda items for the year of two thousand and twelve, are they the same? No. So, why are we imposing a choice to our residents when you've got taxing bodies that should have the right to go to every one of the meetings? They should have that right. That, really, if you think about it, we're elected, we represent their interests, they should have the right to come to these meetings. I mean, that's the real, that's the reality of the matter in front of us.
But, the, I think what, what Gale was trying to say is that the, this, this thing that we're trying to do was not prompted by a bunch of residents asking to be here. Okay, so that's number one. The second point I want to make is that we're supposed to be here on a second, fourth Monday anyways. So, switching it to the fourth Monday, as long as we can work out the logistics, should not matter to any one of us, because we could begin starting to be here on the second, fourth Monday. So, I think we're bewavering the point for no reason, provided we can work out the other items. So, we have one, two suggestions, we make the motion night to change the meeting night, or, Dave, it has to be a motion, and then we work out the details, or we table it tonight until we can make sure we work out the details and we vote on it next meeting. But, I think it's time to leave you.
The only thing to do is you could cancel the second.
Correct.
Meeting in April, the second Monday, because we're meeting the fourth anyway.
Correct.
Because that's our budget meeting. And I think we've already taken care of the other meetings up to that one. So, you could pass a motion canceling the second Monday in April, because we're meeting that fourth Monday anyway.
And then from then on, we would be at the fourth Monday, and we would decide.
To May, you can't.
Can't.
It's more, so you need to pick.
Somebody just whispered a year or something like that, right?
Yeah, so I don't know what you do about it.
That's no different than any other holiday, it falls on a Monday, we would change that particular one. That's why I say, I think we're, to me, we're making a mountain of it. We're supposed to be here the second, fourth Mondays, just flip flop, let's make it the fourth Monday, be done with it. I think we can work out the logistics of the bills. Let's move on.
It's typically when, when a meeting falls on a holiday, you meet the following day, which would be Tuesday.
Wonder.
And that's what you do. But, that's why we need to discuss that, I mean, if someone's going to be late to meet, you hold second Monday in May, and go back.
Well, we're on a Wednesday. If we miss a Monday, we go Wednesday.
Okay, that always happens, no matter what we do. We have a holiday, we have to pick another day, guys, I reckon, Gale, and then we have to make sure that this meeting room is available. So, we still have to cross that.
That's true, too.
No matter what we do, we're going to have to cross the same thing. We're, we're meeting at Dead Horse, fourth Thursday.
Laboring a point.
That too. I like Dead Horse.
We'd like to know when we're meeting, that's, I mean, for scheduling.
All right, if somebody'd like to make the motion that we cancel the second meeting in April, and we have it on the fourth meeting. Slow move. Everybody know what we're doing?
Yeah.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Who made the motion, he said?
I did.
Larry, and I second it. I second it.
Oh, yeah.
After all?
I think I said that.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I.
Next month we'll discuss meeting.
Yeah, and next month we'll get to May, and then between now and then, we'll work out the bill issue, and we'll work out any other issues that we have.
So, we're going to be here for six weeks, right?
And our spice of life.
And I think we need to send out your members of the board, because a lot of people are supposed to be here.
When we get your package.
All right. Public buildings and properties, parks and recreation committee.
Park rule ordinance update, we don't have one yet, we're working on it as soon as, I think we have a couple months yet before the, before the parks open. I don't think anybody's listening.
I'm planning to get here.
That doesn't matter.
Who cares, Scott?
It's all right. Well, our number one rule will be no trustees are out in the park after.
You start from the beginning, can't push.
Okay. Park rule ordinance update, I'm getting with, Tim, we're going to work out the park rules and have that established prior to anybody getting out there to use the park. And shakes his head yes. We're going to go in like four, five months. Well, instead, park improvement update, we haven't met yet with Buddy and Feature Rec, but we'll be working on that. I think you guys could bounce snow a little bit.
Uh, met with them as to what, with the lights?
No, this is well instead.
Oh, well instead, no.
I'm not met with that.
We're going to, we're going to work on that, and we still have some time on that. Electrical drop into firemen's number three, which is off of Miller Street.
That I did, that I did meet with them, I went with the engineer, you're going to have two drops, and you're going to share the scoreboard and the drop with a ribbon of hold, and the other scoreboard will, will be a drop coming down from the transformer on, right down to third baseline.
Oh, of, of field number one.
That's correct.
So, so field number one needs its own drop as well?
Yes.
You can't tap into the lights?
No, I mean, that's too far of a run, Bob, with all the stuff that's in there to begin with, I don't know what I'd be ripping out.
Okay, do we have a price on what it costs?
No.
No, and, and, and they said before they do the drops, we would have to go ahead and trench in and put the boxes in, and that's not gonna be done till springtime.
Right, yeah, we're gonna, you have to coordinate that. Also, I talked to Mike Stanula about the ribbon of hold, to see where that box needs to come in, because we'll be coming right through there, I'm sure.
Right.
Okay.
Well, definitely to get with them, and I'm sure it's gonna be on the quick track the minute that the ground thaws out.
Okay, all right. So we're working in that, that's, that's how we're working. We have, consider a motion, motion letting bids for the Village Hall Rehabilitation at six twenty-five Dixie Highway. Uh, there's a schedule in front of you as far as the date when the, it's gonna be published in the local paper, it's February thirteenth. Open bids on the fifth. Uh, we're gonna hopefully award bids on the tenth of March, and, um, we'll get everything ready to go as far as completing everything on June fifteenth. And then move in day is August first, but that's pretty impressive.
That's the way that, that's the way the mayor wants it. I told him, you'd be lucky if you didn't have waiting to be, he thinks August first.
Okay.
He has a spellbook.
And we'll be having our meetings there anyway, right?
Right.
So we don't have to worry about scheduling.
That's a good point.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to, to let, for letting bids for the Village Hall at six twenty-five Dixie Highway.
Second. Motion on the fourth, there was a second, any questions or discussion?
Was it in our packet? The notice? Copy of it?
Copy of it, no, I have, I didn't see it.
No, it was approved by the attorney, maybe he didn't make it in there.
No, there's that.
I'm telling you, this thing got so big, I don't know, you didn't think what was going in, what was going out.
I didn't see it in my report.
It's short, it's not big, it just says, plans can be picked up at Mike Stanula for a fee, you know, he, he charges a plan fee, twenty-five bucks a set or something. And, uh, it's not re fungable, you pick that up, and then bids are due either to his office or the Village Hall by the opening day, which is the fifth of March. Actually, I think we made it, uh, Wednesday, the fourth, I think the bid was, we changed it by the day according to the standard, if you want an extra day to look at. But you, you approve that bid once.
Are we gonna be mailing any of these at all, or is it strictly pickup?
Probably strictly pickup, I don't know who I mail them to, you know. We can send out the notice. Usually, if it's in the local paper, Dodge Reports have picked out, Contractors Weekly and all that stuff, they'll take that notice up. And I don't want to pick and choose, we mail it to, but if you guys have suggestions, we'll mail it to them.
There was just the one that I had, I brought to Greg and to you, whatever that passion is. I thought that they would be an ideal candidate, you know, whether or not they would see this notice or not, or find out about it to be able to do it, but there was a, uh, this was probably two years ago, Bob and Paul went to this presentation, which it doesn't really work, this presentation really wouldn't work for a village our size, but there's a, basically a co-op, and this passion who, um, it's for this local paper, and other villages and communities have come in, it's what, six thousand page report, where everything is already bid out. For a big city like Naperville, they don't need on their board meetings to go through every, you know, pothole repair, or light replacement, you know, it's already bid to where it's approved, where they use this group at this discounted rate. Anyway, my thinking was, is that that's somebody that's used to doing municipal work, buildings, stuff like that, I thought that might be an ideal candidate for somebody to bid on it. Whether or not they had an interest in bidding on it or that, that's a whole other.
So we all noticed the passion then?
If we. Yeah, email or fax, I'm not saying mail them or print and say, bid this, but, you know, yeah, I noticed that we let this out for bid, if they're interested in it. Like I said, it only caught my eye because this was brought to me because of the, um, sewer and water committee, and it was brought to Greg from the streets and alleys, you know, a couple of years ago, everything's done for bidding out, you know what I mean? It's, it's somebody that's used to municipal work, they're obviously getting good discounts because they have this large account to be able to get the contractors to do these kind of work, who knows what kind of number they'd give us?
I think we'll, the contract, local, stay local.
Well, absolutely, I, I agree with you, but.
It's Village Hall.
Yeah. Do you work local?
Tom?
Do you work local?
I work, I work at home.
You work at home, what? Okay. Just out of curiosity, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the percentage of our residents are that work local. So when you say hire local, you could hire a company, my company's like Carol Stream, but.
Consider local contractors before we go out. If there's nobody locally that can do this work.
Yeah.
Well, it's open field.
If we're, well, if we're, if we're doing bid letting, first of all, it's competition. And if your, your local businesses are charging a higher rate, and there's another business that's charging a lower rate, you're going with the lower number. I mean, that's the idea of bid letting, otherwise, the, the whole purpose of bid letting is lost. It's the low man gets the job. And the advantage of a local guy doing it is. The, the advantage of going with a local guy is he does not, he does not have cost of mobilization, because he's here.
Everything goes local.
Okay, before everybody goes on, I don't think there's anybody on this board with dispute that we would love to have somebody local bidding in this round, but when it comes down to it, it's sort of out of our control, we have to go out for bid, we have to accept bids from everybody. And then, bottom line is that we accept the lowest bid, depending upon the qualifications or whether or not they can do the job. So I think, again, before we get into an argument, I think all of us would prefer to stay local as much as possible. In reality, the law doesn't allow us to do as much as we want to, that's what it boils down to. So before we go on, and bottom line is, the reason why we go out for bids, because we are spending tax dollars, and we're trying to save tax money. So the point that everybody is making is very well taken, we have to go out for bids, and we'll go from there. I believe there was a motion, and there was a second, and there is a roll on.
What was the motion, Bobby?
The motion was to let bids.
Yeah.
My second.
And before we go on, so everybody understand what we're doing, there was a motion, there was a second, I'm letting for bids, item number four, for the Village Hall.
Clarence?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Holman?
No.
Whalen?
Yes.
Was that the super majority?
Yes, no.
I got a question, why we didn't. The only reason I ask is one or two, perhaps? Because I had planned on running those bills separately, like we do the estero accounts for the project.
I think it could be wrong.
Certain items are in my bill.
But my understanding was for the purchase of property required a super, just super majority in there after, I didn't think so, but obviously you're the group.
Yeah, because they say we need it.
Yeah, which is.
Okay, number five, consider proposal from Twin Supplies to replace all of the lighting fixtures in the village facilities in the amount of fifty-five hundred ten dollars and thirty-one cents. I'm gonna let Bob explain this as far as the, um.
Okay, we're the, we're the last taxing body of all the local governments that went through this, uh, three worker lights, and the reason why we're the last, usually we're the first, is because we don't pay electric bill, so there was no real incentive to do it. But, they finally came to us again and said, look, you know, we can get all your fixtures in your old buildings replaced, and I can get it seventy percent funded by the state. And we look at the amount of work they're planning on doing, and what it really costs us, um, it's probably not a bad deal. Even though we don't pay electric bill one way or the other. Uh, there are some product, there are some buildings we do pay electric for, like the sewer plant and the wells, where you might see some savings on the electric bill. But the only reason we'd be doing this is A, because we are concerned about the environment, and B, we're gonna get all the fixtures replaced with twenty-five year rated fixtures. And I know, Buddy, we do have problems with some of the ballots in the Village Hall now, and we actually have some fixtures in the Stanley Courts and the police station that were probably original from the building in nineteen fifty-eight, am I right, Jeff, the old green?
Yeah.
Fixure with the incandescent bulb in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Is Ron?
These grants come to an end. I'm gonna check to make sure the grant is still good.
It's still good, but not for much longer.
Yeah.
So if you wanna take advantage of it, and Ron, have you had experience with this company in the private sector?
They just did our plan.
Yeah. Is the lighting pretty good at that?
Good.
Is it?
Dan that took us. Doing wind flying. Changed out thirty-eight light fixtures and a D N S.
Now, we would use the money that will gather available to us on this first motion from our electrical power line items in the budget, which are right now trending a lot lower than expected. So this, this impact of the budget would be on local budget money, and it would be on the existing line items.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, um, to accept the, uh, amount for Twin Supplies to replace all the lighting fixtures in the village facilities in the amount of fifty-five hundred ten dollars and thirty-one cents.
Smoke on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Ladies first.
Would this also pertain to the new Village Hall?
Now, they'll get separate motion, it's the next one.
Oh.
I have to explain that one.
John, can you?
Yeah. Out of these, how many of them are we even paying the electric bill on?
Sewer plant, wells, three, four, five.
So the.
Other board's garage, too, the old one?
The old shop?
Old shop? You don't pay on that one?
No.
Is that part of the sewer? Is that part of the sewer system?
No, the old shop, anything that's considered corporate, we don't pay anything that's considered private.
So when that gets converted to a dry system?
Yeah, the whole enterprise, yes. You are correct, Ron.
If we went that way, would the same fixtures be left in that building? I know it is time, I highly doubt it. You're changing the use of the building. And the layout of the light structure, the light that you're gonna put in, there's gonna need to change. Just stating the ideas.
I guess my only question is, is that, I understand the being green part, but what savings are you getting when you're not paying a bill? And seventy percent savings of zero is.
Get new fixtures, that's what you're getting.
So, I, I mean, I definitely see it for, you know, the next motion on the new Village Hall for the wells and, uh, um, the sewer plant, but.
Didn't that include Fireman's Park, too, though?
No.
Yeah, that, I took them all around to all the vendors' buildings and lights that are in the park. What about the vault, too?
No.
Can't do it.
We tried. No, they've got, they've got the sewer plant, they have the wells, they have the old shop, well floor.
I don't see a price for the old Village Hall.
Sixteen hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Yeah, that's the, uh, second sheet, the second sheet in general. There's two pages. The first two pages of the Twin Supplies are the Village Hall. And the next two of the sewer plant are all being provided. Then the old shop is fifteen sixty, well three, six seventeen, seven, well four, four one, four point five, three. That should have been five, ten feet.
John, in response to what you said, I think the discussion was, was that because of the delta, a lot of these fixtures were original fixtures, then it might be better if you just change the fixtures out, you know, there would be no cost savings, sorry. That's what the discussion was, that did come up.
And if there are eight foot fluorescents, you can't get bulbs anymore.
Right.
Yeah, they're.
Discontinued.
Yeah, I got light, I can't even get fixtures for half of the light fixtures down at the old, I, the bulbs for having them down at the old shop. And, but like you said, the, the eight footers, or even the six footers, they're, they're obsolete.
Their history, yeah.
They're phasing out the two, the two pin four footers, so that's just a matter of time, too. But they're putting, they're putting fluorescents back in, aren't they? Yeah. Why aren't they going LED in the entire facility? You're talking about savings.
Think they don't, the longer bulbs, fixtures, they don't make them yet, I believe you said.
You're replacing the fixtures, you're not changing out the bulbs.
No, you're replacing the guts of the eight foot fixtures and making them two four footers.
And they don't make the, they, he said they were experimenting with the long ones.
The shoulder fixtures stayed up there, they changed the ballast and, and two four foot.
Two four foot ones covers.
And then, uh, and then, yeah.
Really? I mean, I guess my only question would be, would we be replacing light fixtures in the old Village Hall? If this weren't coming up, because we're not, we're not paying for electrical anyway, what's the savings?
Yeah, I can tell you, in one office, compare it, like, you can't pay for it.
That is true.
I don't think that much.
In a particular office, you know.
Yeah, one particular, I, your point is very well taken, that there are no savings, but the idea is because of the age of the fixtures that are there, and as some of the wells are obsolete, that either we end up paying the full bill somewhere down the road, or we take advantage of part of it right now.
Which only would apply.
I, I agree, I agree with everything that we're paying a bill on, and, uh, I mean, in the Village Hall, I mean, we do have a police department moving into it, even though we're not, and we're giving them the light fixtures, but we're doing it. But, I mean, old shop though, Ryan's got a good point, with spending money on that, that, I mean, plans are in twenty seventeen, correct? That this all gets transformed, that is probably gonna be a drying area for.
We do only make the old shop, and the reason for that is we don't use the lights out there much anymore anymore.
Well, yeah, we do, but they're not, the lights that they're gonna be repla, they're not replacing every light fixture we have in our body. They're only gonna be staggered to where they're, you know, like, there'll be a light in front of the work table, there'll be the light in, in the bathroom, of course, there'll be a light in the, in the one store room, there'll be probably, uh, four lights in, into the, uh, south room, in the big area. They're not gonna be, we're not replacing every single fixture that's there, in fact, they're gonna be using the, the existing conduit, and, you know, it's, it, we kinda downside gone.
If, if we convert that conduit to the dry sludge, which is what we're gonna do, then you'll be moving all those fixtures anyways.
Bob, I, I, Bob, I, you know what, I don't know what the design of the, the new building is gonna be by any means. Nobody does until you go in there. It's gonna be whatever, I would imagine they would probably try to utilize what conduit that they have, and pull on new wires, and put a new, um, um, four hundred amp, two hundred amp. They're gonna be spending.
Make a motion, what's your question, wanna make that one or just go with that one?
We can all make, you know, shed.
Ron, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Whalen?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, the next item is the proposal from the same Twin Supplies to furnish all the lighting fixtures for six twenty-five Dixie Highway, and replacing all exterior fixtures in the amount of forty-four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. I know, um, it, it says here that if we, uh, we do this, we can take that off the bid specs, correct?
Yes, it would be furnished by owner, we're checking with Mike Stanula. And we did run into a little bit of a snag here as a lighting, what I said during these motions, is that we have to provide to the state twelve months of bills for the electric and the gas before they will give us the grant. So I have to put a caveat on there, only if we're grant eligible can we do this. Now, we're roping bids in, it's by owners, this could be a problem, but I just found out we gotta supply them twelve months of bills for gas and electric, even though we didn't own this building until two months ago, so we're scrambling trying to get it from Ron Ryan. Somebody was paying a bill because of the power, Tom.
Sure, based on electric, it was nothing, for the fact that there was no load.
Well, in all honesty, Ron, all the bills we're supplying for this grant show zero because you don't pay.
Exactly.
But it shows the kilowatt use, which is what they're willing. This one, there is no kilowatt use, it's very little, because nothing was on, we just don't provide it. So this grant's a little more kiffy than the other ones, because I don't know if the state's gonna approve this one, do not know why, can't hurt. But then we gotta decide whether we want to leave this business.
Option A?
Option, buy fixtures.
Okay.
Because if you do it afterwards, double the price, once you get that guy on board.
So, I don't think there's a motion. I, I was gonna make a motion. I was gonna make a motion to, um.
Do you like the?
Furnish the lighting fixtures to twin supplies in this, uh, grant for six twenty-five Dixie Highway and replacing all exterior fixtures in the amount of forty-four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. If, if eligible.
Motion on the floor?
I'll say it.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, a question. Where are electricians being installing these lights then?
From the bid spec.
Inside, yes, outside, no.
This is just a lot, Jake, you're pricing.
The, this is, they're, they will be installing the exterior, just like all the other ones.
So this.
But they would be supplying the fixtures from the inside.
They would be supplying the fixtures, but our electrician would be installing.
Correct.
Correct. So there goes part of your savings.
Yeah, honestly.
You guys pay, you still have to have the bid specs.
You gotta pay them to put in something.
Put them in.
Yeah. There's nothing in them now, right?
If we were trying to avoid, in this new building project, a situation where this could occur because we have two electricians in there working? Do you wanna, I mean, we want one party responsible. And if you have twin supplies and they're putting fixtures and another guy putting in a wiring and then there's an issue, we need a wing, that is our concern.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Right.
Hold on.
Gail?
Yeah?
Um, didn't you say though, Ron, that they are keeping their existing fixtures and just replacing the guts like in them? So how would that pertain to this village hall? If you don't have any lights there?
He would purchase those fixtures on our behalf with the grant funding, just have them delivered.
So the given fixtures?
And they, they indicate the labor in the building, labor will be bid out, so they're already taking that into consideration, that they're not putting labor into this, your contract terms. The outside area, they're gonna be doing the flood, they're gonna, you're gonna need to pay for a lift and labor outside the building. So that's the difference of what's happening at the village hall. What's happening inside is on the bid spec, what's happening outside, they're gonna install. My question is, are these lights what's back on our prints?
If you get a mic signal ahead of me, then they. That might work with this guy in the school district, so might carry him up, am I correct?
That's correct.
Well, then the lights at the township.
And the school, yeah, this guy did the township, the school, the fire district, and the library. We could all.
Before we asked, or, about this way, we just had a discussion, both of us, we're gonna use that one.
There are some wrinkles with this one, I don't know if we can get this one done for you. But I would like authority to try, you know, if it doesn't work.
Any other questions? There was a motion, right? Number was the second, right? Go on.
Clear?
Yes.
Karen?
No.
Fire?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Homer?
No.
Willie?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yeah.
Hope you say no on that.
Each has voted yes regardless.
I have voted yes.
He's not waiting for Tim anymore. That ends my report.
I got a question. Moving day, police can un-modify and move into the old village hall. Does anybody got any idea what this is gonna cost?
Two men and a truck.
I think the only modification, Ron, what we talked about was the front door.
You got the trailer.
Actually.
It's in here now, we hold, come in the budget.
Yeah, initially, it's just some paint, some paint right now, and see what we're gonna do to modify the, I'll talk with Bud on that, to see how we're gonna modify the lobby. I mean, the, the old police station is gonna, is still gonna be used, that's gonna be the bonding, that's gonna be for the prisoner, um, entrance, exit. Up front will be the administrative offices, that'll be open during the daytime. So any, anything to change it is not something we have to do immediately, it's something we're just gonna consider. Time permitting, money permitting, that's the big thing. No. You gotta change the paint.
I've been told they don't like the color in somebody's office as well, same one that has the blinking lights.
Maybe it's the point they like to make the color look bad.
But by the way, you're not planning on building any more, or anything like that, so anything that's there is insignificant. And that's pretty much what we discussed. Finding building and zoning. That's right. Public safety on site.
Okay, uh, police department will mostly report with themselves for your review, and police department annual report will be provided at the month, March. Uh, school and safety security update, uh, provided by the chief.
Uh, we're just continuing our, uh, school safety initiative, our security checks of the schools, uh, we'll have more plans coming up when this, uh, weather gets a little better here. And other than that, I have nothing more to report on the security aspect.
It's true, we have under options, yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
Uh, security for Beecher Mausoleum, uh, chief and I have talked about this, uh, chief, give us your reaction on that.
Well, I, I, I think the thing we should consider first is before we talk about any security for the mausoleum, it's not within our corporate boundaries. We are government, we're not a four higher, uh, security agency, so therefore, we really wouldn't have any legal authority to take any enforcement action there, because it's not within our corporate boundaries. And I think that's something that, uh, they really need to reach out to either the Will County Sheriff's Office or plan on an annexation agreement that would give us that authority to act. If we did any security there, we'd just be acting as a private person, and my opinion, I wouldn't go with that, because that just opens you up for civil litigation.
Right now, it's covered on the county.
The county.
Their township.
Yes.
They're on the responsibility of the county.
That is correct, Will County Sheriff's Police. And it, it wouldn't be any different than somebody trying to get the Will County Sheriff's to police to come in the Beecher to provide police service for them. County, I'm sure, would not do that, because it's not under their jurisdiction. They have countywide jurisdiction, but then they have boundaries too.
Specifically, what was brought up is there is a provision in the law that would allow us to enter in, into an agreement with the mausoleum or the, um, cemetery that's there, as long as it's within one mile of your jurisdiction. So the question, you're not suggesting that then, so in other words, it wouldn't be allowed to come, you could enter an agreement, which could wait this fight.
Well, and I just think the sheriff should be on board with that, we should have someone from the sheriff's office in that agreement also.
Is the county in fact patrolling out there?
I can't answer that, I, I don't.
Yes, you can.
Great, one question concerning that law. It says that they would have to contract with us?
Yeah, there is a provision like the school district, she brought it up that night, the school district can contract with the law enforcement agency if the school is within one mile of your jurisdiction, okay, so you can contract with that law enforcement, that law enforcement agency, that becomes their police department, makes no difference whether the sheriff wants to do it or not, if the school wants that police department, they can do it. Sandra brought it up that night, pointed out a law, which I discussed it with Tim, that apparently for the, this mausoleum and a cemetery, they can do the same thing. They can contract with the police department, each police would then become their police department, the county would have no say so with this whatsoever, whether they object to it or not, correct? Doesn't matter.
I think in that case, they'd have overlapping jurisdiction, but yeah, we talked about it a couple of months ago, I don't know the more particulars on it, but the one mile was something that was definitely there, and I know we.
But, again, if you're suggesting that we, we don't wanna enter into this agreement, that's fine, that was the question.
If we enter into an agreement, is it, they're paying to, for this, how's, how's the, like, if a school decided that they wanted, you're one mile, within one mile, we want a contract that the village of Beecher provides its police service, even though it's not in our corporate district? I mean, how are we paying for that service?
You pay for it just like you would anything else. I don't believe it, it's a cemetery tax anyways. Yeah, I mean, it's.
It could be, it could be, usually the church would not provide.
That was one of the. That's, that's why I'm wondering, how would that, and the other problem is, the, the road surface is, is tree lined, so you're gonna have tons of roads. And what do you do in the winter time when the police is contracted, but the village is not, it's not in, it's not part of the village entity?
I think, to maybe cut this short, because I wasn't aware that there was, there was a meeting, so, uh, she sent me another email that I, if I read the email correctly, basically now she no longer wants that, she just wants to patrol. Or, or basically hold the fort until the county gets there, well, we all understand how that works, so based upon her email, I think probably it's a twenty, twenty hours, I was gonna bring it up after the meeting.
Because it, because in the winter time, the police are, now they're top, they would have to be able to get through there, which means somebody, the township would have to file that area up, that's a private road.
Right, some of those things would still have to be worked on as far as. But again, it's probably important because they already took care of it.
Okay, presentation on the use of the assets of during NEXO service. Chief?
Okay, thought Buddy was gonna bring the popcorn.
I paid five dollars to watch this. That'd be good. I had to move, it better be good.
You gotta sit down.
He has a one.
Well, first I wanna say that, you know, I'm not a communications stack or expert, I'm not know all that computer savvy, I don't even have a Facebook or a Twitter or other social network site, so what I'm presenting to you is just research and information that I have gained on the different social networks, the sites, and what they offer to us and what we currently have. And any questions that I cannot answer, I will certainly find the answer for you at a later date, but I think it's all pretty much self-explanatory. The whole basis behind NEXO is to connect all these entities, you see NEXO in the middle, that's the hub, they can connect your police to the community, to schools, fire, uh, they've got a Facebook integration, there's your short message service, email, it can bring it all together. And it's, just from the way we've been doing things, the way we communicate, everything is shifting now. You know, Americans collectively spend two billion hours every month, the equivalent of a quarter of their time online, they're assessing, sharing, and distributing information through social media. So what we used to see on the milk cartons, we're seeing on the internet and at various social media sites. And now we have it on our phones, mobile access is everywhere. It's a leading channel for assessing media. And, uh, one of the researchers, uh, said, "We look at our mobile phones a hundred and fifty times a day, equivalent to once every six point five minutes." And then most of us keep our phones on us on an average of fourteen hours a day. It's information, it's you've got the internet, you've got your social media, you got everything right there, any breaking news, it's right on your phone where you're at. So what does NEXO do for us, all right? It puts the public safety agencies and their communities through one simple interface. Okay, like, you're the agencies, NEXO is in the cloud. They allow state agencies to engage their committees, communities in real-time communication whenever they go online. Um, if, if you've signed up for the NEXO, you've been receiving our messages, that's real time. The minute I hit the send button, you're getting that message on your, uh, your phones and your emails. The different channels, SMS, that's your short message service, there's your emails, it, it can, goes to your phone. The leverage, it's multiple channels for increased engagement, including text, web, voice, um, an iPhone app, and even electronic road signs, which we're, we're not at that stage yet. Now, it's an open network integrating with Facebook, Twitter, iPOS, um, and Google, and alerts for maximum message and distribution impact. And what it does is, it, it brings everything together through those different, uh, it's, it's a multi-navigator system, multi-messengers, foster tighter community, community relationships, can even prevent, solve crime, it can quicken emergency response and relief, elicit community feedback, gain recognition, build positive public perception, again, with, with NEXO community engagement is the key. All right, and, and, and I was asked to look at other, um, uh, social network, uh, sites that do similar to what NEXO does, and what sets NEXO apart? Well, NEXO's designed for public safety, and it's not just for emergency notification. Uh, it's a simple, one-page, user-friendly interface, uh, the performance is through Enlets and Verisign, and their true SMS messaging, which stands for the short message service. And, uh, NEXO has an exclusive partnership for Google for unmatched reach. Now, why that's important is because if you do, if we have a missing person and we send the NEXO alert out, even if you don't have NEXO, if you do a Google search on that name of that person, uh, you can bring up that NEXO message, and you can even have a picture of them. Out of the box, iPOS integration, uh, the NEXO hub is, you've got for public and private two-way notifications, and it's the lowest-cost MNS, which is multi-navigator system guaranteed. And we'll see the prices as we move forward. They are tailored for public safety, uh, there's identity certification, federal emergency level notifications, law enforcement-grade security and reliability, centralized communications management, uh, messaging support, they have anonymous tipping from residents, and it's true anonymous tipping, because the tips don't come to me, it goes to NEXO and then to me. And then I can answer those tips through NEXO, so I never see who's sending me the message, and it, it goes through NEXO. Secure and operable two-way communication of public safety agency, they offer a twenty-four seven phone support, remote publishing, location and interest-based targeting, and an open and integrated platform for flexibility. All right, and, and I said earlier, it's not just for alerts, some of your other notifications out there are governed strictly by, it's gotta be an emergency, it's gotta be, uh, something for public safety. Here you got, uh, three levels, you got your alerts, you've got advisories, or you can have community, which means you, you can send, uh, um, a community notice, you know, uh, uh, youth commission doing their, uh, daughter daddy dance, you can send that out, NEXO. Um, the non-emergency advisories, you can send out different advisories, I've sent those up before, uh, Fourth of July, when we had certain activities going on. And then the alerts, that's your emergency, that's for missing child, severe weather warning, uh, gas leak, evacuation notice, and then your non-emergency, that's intended for need-to-know information. You can do water main break, boil water, road construction, and then here's for, for in, basically anything else, but you're not limited to just, um, public safety emergencies. Now, this is what the, the, the platform looks like when you bring NEXO up. You, you choose whether it's alert, advisory, or community notification, there's your SMS, it tells you how many characters you got left. The SMS is, is very short, you've only got like a total of a hundred and sixty-eight characters, and then you can go down and. And then you can go down in the body, which isn't here, but when you see it. When you click on the email portion, then you can type in the full email of your SMS. And you just click which group you want it to go to. You got your public groups and your private groups. And select a message. You want it future delivered, you wanna send it now. Now, this NEXO I don't have. I just have the basic NEXO. Which I think I have, that'll be coming up here shortly. But again, performance, it's partnered with VeriSign. They've built the fastest SMS distribution, five hundred messages per second. Reliability, ninety-nine point nine percent uptime. The security, has run with no failures or security compromises. And it's also identity certification. The process ensures end-users can trust. Again, two thousand eleven winner of the Homeland Security Award, and then two thousand twelve outstanding product of Law Officer Magazine. Now, SMTP, which is Simple Mail Transfer Protocol. Don't ask me what it is, I just read what it is. Versus SMS, which is your short message transfer in SAMP, which is a short message peer-to-peer. Your SMS, the short message transfer, that's a text. Your Simple Mail Transfer Protocol, that's your email. So what are the differences? Well, with emails, there's delivery concerns, and it's routed through email networks, not likely to be delivered. You might be blocked or delayed because you're spam, character limitations, and you must update your records if you change carriers. And we all have different email addresses, and we do change those. With the true SMS, you got fast, reliable delivery, since it's routed through cellphone carriers. There's no spam, no character limitations. You have, only that ten-digit phone number is needed, and you get a confirmation. It gives you confirmation. These are kind of what the NEXO alerts look like. On ours, it'll say PD Beecher, Illinois, you know, water main break, Miller and Catalpa, whatever other information there is that we put out. Again, we talked at previous board meetings on how you sign up for NEXO to opt-in. You can either text your message or keyword or your zip code to eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven. We also have a NEXO badge that's located on the village website and the police department website, where you can just hit the button and sign up for NEXO messages. Again, the share partner networks with Google and the public alerts, and also FEMA and iPOS. I wrote down what iPOS stands for, that international... You remember what iPOS was?
That's the activation of, it's the new EPS system.
Integrated Public Alert and Warning System.
It's the new emergency broadcast.
So, NEXO partners with these agencies here. There's three levels in NEXO. What I have right now is a NEXO Connect. All right, that's a free notification, it's connecting agencies, their residents. Problem is, it's a limited engagement. NEXO Engage is their enhanced platform. It does the same thing NEXO Connect does, except it's a real-time information exchange. The residents can take a collaborative role. And I'll get to the other features they offer. And at NEXO three sixty delivers everything, including voice, for the ultimate engagement. Okay, so NEXO Connect, what do we have? What am I doing now? It's unlimited text, email, and web. You only get two publishers per agency. You can attach images, deliver statistics and analytics. There's custom registration widget, that's that NEXO, this NEXO badge, that's on our website to sign up. A web publication via local.nexo.com, and basic email support. Which means if we have a problem just during business hours, they can give us some support.
I got a question, Jeff. Why do you get that for free? Who's paying for it?
That's just the free service.
So NEXO just does that out of goodness of their heart?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if it's a goodness of their heart. I mean, they have...
Is the state agency supporting it, so that's why you get it for free? Is it kind of like a ideas thing?
Yeah, well, they're hoping that you're gonna jump to the higher one. I mean, when you see all that it offers and all you can do with it, it's just, it's kind of like, how do you wanna engage your community? You wanna do the NEXO Connect, or you wanna go to one of the other ones? So this is what we have now. You notice there's only the NEXO layer public group. That's when I bring up, to send out a message, this is what I have. Choose alert, advisory, or community. I set up the SMS, and then I click the email, and I type in the body. I can attach an image there. But it only goes to the public groups, those that signed up for NEXO. And then you preview the message and you can send it. NEXO Engage is everything that... All right, well, this is NEXO Engage. I'll get to three sixty. But it's everything that the Connect offers, except this has the anonymous tipping. We can have unlimited agency users, which means we, unlimited, anybody. It can be me, Jeanette, Marcy, it can be Bob, it can be the mayor. You're gonna have unlimited people to send out NEXO messages. You can have public and private group notifications. So you can just set up public works in here and send public works in NEXO alert. We can just have the police department. You can have just the administration, you can have just the trustees, whoever you want. Or even just one of your, one of the commissions. I mean, provided, maybe a lot of them don't have, you know, these cellphones. If they did, you can just send it just to that special group. Got social media integration, National Weather Service, we rebroadcast. So we don't have to go in here and send out the weather alerts. It's automatically gonna rebroadcast it over NEXO. The iPOS publication, again, the image document, PDF attachments, message templates. It's got a Spanish-language translation. And it does have enhanced geographic targeting, scheduled messaging, HTML editor for advanced and publication... Notification. Ah, was that a typo there? Sorry about that. And they give you a live twenty-four-hour support and publishing. So when we talk about the tipping, residents can submit or reply with anonymous tips via text message and web. Right to, it goes through NEXO and comes to us, so we can communicate with someone. So here they're saying, you know, "Wanted subject," and they said, "I saw the subject getting into a gray sedan." This is live time, so it's just whatever time it takes for that text to get to NEXO and NEXO to send it on. Which when I send a message, I think it goes, it's about three and a half, four seconds before it hits my phone. It's got a tip watch, we're provided with a two-way communication tool to manage and respond to information from anonymous community-generated tips. And again, this is just on the NEXO Engage. One-to-one information exchange, again, it's... We can respond, thanks for the information, and ask questions, and then they can follow up. And it does make a difference. I mean, if we had that, I mean, kids now, I mean, even from thirteen, fourteen years old, they've all got a cellphone, and they're all texting, and they're all sending messages. And believe me, if they see something, they wanna tell somebody.
Okay, Jeff, I got a question here. Where it says city police message? A kid sends that thing from the bottom, where does that go? To your MDT in the squad car? Does it go to one computer in the police station? I mean, how real-time, since we have limited staff, and how real-time can that be?
We'd have to set it up where it would go, but it would go to another cellphone. It'd come as a text.
From to a smartphone, not to the MDT.
Yes, right.
Can you initiate a message off of an MDT with this NEXO?
I can always send messages out.
From a MDT, you just can't receive?
Right. Okay, we talked about getting to different groups, and create interest-based groups. I talked about that already. You can have a commission, administration, public works, please. We can set up our groups. You've got your public, and then you got your private groups also. And again, this is just generally what the template would look like. You know, there's your group name, the keyword, and you got city administration, fire department, hospital, neighborhood watch groups, police department. It'll tell you how many contacts, how many short message email, and then the day it was created. So it kind of keeps track of how many messages are going out. And it easily import data from a CSV file. Especially if we were gonna go with the NEXO voice, I did talk with Will County nine-one-one, and they said they do have a file that they could give us with, that has all the phone numbers, and that we would have to... NEXO can do this for us, because I guess it is not that easy to download that whole file and copy and paste. It'd be like a hundred and fifty dollars, they could do it, put the whole file in our database. But again, it's, you're not gonna do any good sending a message to a landline. You have to differentiate what's a landline and what's a cellphone. All right, have the abilities to customize and automate our National Weather Service warnings and advisories. Here, we can say if you wanna rebroadcast of, well, there's like tornado warnings. They do is click that box, and every time the National Weather Service issues a warning, NEXO automatically send that out. And you pick whether it's gonna be an SMS or an email, and it's on our voice, or Facebook, or Twitter, with the integration there. So we don't have to go in here and set up the message, you know, there's a tornado warning in effect, this will rebroadcast it. We can, the Facebook page integration, we can integrate NEXO to their agency Facebook through Twitter. We can share NEXO content on Facebook, and optionally enable commenting for community feedback. Now, NEXO three sixty offers you everything that NEXO Engage offers you with. The only difference is this is where your voice dialing would come in. This adds voice to everything you already have. So you can upload a voice recording, where you can record your own messages, you can use text-to-speech, you can just map off a geographical area where you want that message to go to, and they got translation prompts also, if you wanna send it in a different language. And that's the voice dialing. And then right now, they have over sixty-eight hundred agencies across the country that use NEXO. You know, partnering with NEXO, total community engagement via text, email, web messaging, voice dialing if you choose to go that way, and the power of the partner network. So that's the important thing, the Google and the FEMA networks. Now, another outfit out there is called Blackboard Connect. And they're primarily an educational institution product, but they're moving into public safety. They were designed for the schools. I think a lot of the schools use this. And they provide the SMS, email, and voice notifications like NEXO. And they allow a portal on the village website for subscribers to update or change contact information. And they say their cost is truly unlimited messaging. The price quoted is the final cost to the village, and there's no cost passed on to subscribers. It's the same with NEXO. They don't pass on the cost to subscribers, provided that you get texting. If you only get two hundred and fifty messages, and anything over two hundred and fifty is a quarter a message, you're gonna pay a quarter a message. Now, my plan is, I got unlimited texting, so it doesn't cost me anything to receive messages from any one of them. And they have unlimited usage of the Connect service, all paths. Simplified email-like user interface, they have the geo-targeting and full map-based support. They've got a full service, twenty-four-seven support and training. And they also boast a ninety-nine point nine-nine percent uptime. Call capacity of three point six meg, and sixty-second calls, and three point two meg on SMS message per hour. I guess that's fast, I'm not really sure. I'm just passing on the information. Another thing that we have available to us is through our dispatch center at East Common, it's called Code Spear. And it's technology that uses a Will County nine-one-one, has geo-mapping available, that we can utilize this, where it will voice dial for emergency or public safety notifications. Now, there's no cost for us to use this to read East Common, since they are dispatching center. However, it has to be an emergency or public safety notification. If you have a water main break and you got a boil order, yeah, that can be considered a public safety notification. And it will map off an area. So if you just have, you know, west of... West of Dunbar, you can map that area off, and it'll voice dial all the homes west of Dunbar and notify them of a boil order. Now, if you're gonna, on a comparison, right now, the NEXO that I use is free to the village and subscribers, but only one administrator of the account is allowed. I did say there's two, but the other one was Jeff Dopke, and I can't find a way to erase him off there, so right now we're just stuck with one. NEXO Engage provides anonymous tipping, National Weather Service rebroadcast, private group messaging, advanced publishing options, social media integrator, remote publishing, scheduled message, iPOS publishing, advanced geographic targeting, and Spanish-language transition. And then NEXO three sixty just adds voice to all the above. So what does it cost? Blackboard Connect five is comparable to NEXO three sixty with a few exceptions. They do not have anonymous tipping. They did say it's something they're working on. They're no partnering with Google, and they focus on educational institutions, and they're just now entering the public safety. NEXO Engage would be twenty-two fifty annually. NEXO three sixty, that's with the voice, that'd be fifty-nine fifty annually. Blackboard Connect is ninety-two eighty-two point eighty-two annually. And they say, they got a license fee, and it's one ninety-one per person annually, and they go by your last sentences, which is forty-three sixty. So that's how they get that fee set up there. So, I'll go back to this. A few options are, we can stay with the NEXO we have now. It doesn't cost us anything. The NEXO Engage, if you wanna utilize it for the other village departments, and have your private networks and your public ones, and there's a lot of other benefits with the NEXO Engage. Definitely, I wouldn't recommend the Blackboard Connect, it's at a price, and we are already utilizing NEXO. And we already have, I think it's a hundred and seventy-seven people signed up for NEXO. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, provided that I can. One theory was, well, if we go to just the NEXO Engage for that twenty-two, what is it? Twenty-two fifty annually, and then we can use the Code Spear for our voice dial, since that doesn't cost anything. That seems like it'd be a logical choice, as opposed to spending the extra money for something with the NEXO and the voice dial.
How often, how many times a year do you think this system would be utilized? How many times a year? Two hundred, one hundred? The reason I ask is, maybe a cost per use, you know, is it gonna cost me a dollar per use, or ten dollars a use, based on the number of times I would use it a year? Again, I can only gauge how many times we'd be sending things out, not how many times something would come in.
Yeah, and that's new water equity trade, so I don't even know how much would... Yeah, and that's new water activity training, so I don't even know how much would be going in. One thing that Nixle did relay to me is they do surveys, they do customer surveys and what they heard is from their customers that they'd like to see more messages come up. They'd like to see more information.
Would you designate somebody, Jeff, and you get from the police, like be responsible?
Well, and that'd be the benefit of going to Nixle Engage is when you have multi-administrators or users of the account. It's, right now, it's just me and somebody's got to call me and say, send out a Nixle message. And provided I have, I usually have internet service wherever I go. They don't have the ability to send it off my phone now, which maybe that's something that can be done with Nixle Engage.
If people wanted to send you tips, where would these tips go and who would receive these tips?
Well, they go to Nixle and Nixle would send them to us.
Send them to who? I mean, to what? To all the smartphones in the police department or to laptops?
Probably wherever we designate it.
Because I think you and Lieutenant, you only do a smartphone, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't it go to that software, that one page that you had there where you mentioned goes that software and somebody has to be assigned to check that software?
Yeah.
Probably get the notification.
The notification would probably go to the phone also. And then, yeah, you'd manage it on their website, but you get the notification on the phone.
Some of the things that discussed is that if we were to do this again, if you're not at all, discussion started, it is that we want to better inform our public of events that we could not use the Code Spear for, which is located in EastCom. The idea that we had was that since EastCom had always capability, we would stay with EastCom for that because we decided amongst ourselves that we would only use voice for the real emergencies that we want to get out. We want to get a voice message out that way. The other information that we wanted to get out as far as boil or maybe not even boil or as well, let's say the water main breaks, why you're out of water, why you're out of power, roads are hazardous, from that all the way down to maybe 4th of July or something like that, whatever the case may be, we would use the Nixle Engage along with the package of Mercy's going to present later on. And again, the whole idea was to better inform the public of what we do, how we do, why we do in any urgency, so for an non-urgency situation or urgent situations and that there is even a, to go on to non-urgent situations. One of those would have been the garbage can issue that we had a year ago. We needed a way to tell the public right away or something about the garbage cans and we couldn't do it through the EastCom one because it wasn't considered public safety.
Oh, the can would be able to.
Brian, you off?
Oh, good. Chief, are you done with that report?
Sorry.
Okay, are there any questions, the chief or myself?
The point is to put this in budget then. And we hope these presentations are in the way so we have a budget workshop we can spend half hour, 45 minutes on. This is the time of the week.
Okay, no questions, I'm the chief or myself, that concludes my report.
Of a March meeting, first big word.
Water department and sewer department monthly reports are in post review along with the water and sewer system annual reports. Does anyone have any questions on those? Buddy, do you want to talk about our water loss percentage?
No, not tonight.
This has been a crazy, you know, water main breaks.
I'll address that at the next board meeting.
Okay.
I'll have a nice little presentation, not PowerPoint though, but.
No, you'll let the chief keep moving on.
Yeah, he can do that. I'm not going to Kinko's either, who should.
Yeah, your annual reports, just keep giving one up.
Nope.
Public Works Department annual report will be provided at the March meeting. It's just stated. Val Turney report, we are still awaiting the final report for Simpson.
He's in California and he won't be back until the 20th of this month.
Yeah, we need that.
And that will come with a disc and, well, with mapping.
Prairie Avenue water main installation update, Buddy, even.
That's, I kind of put them on a week, two-week notice. They're going to, we're going to touch base on Friday to see where we're at starting next week, weather permitting. If next week's weather is going to be, you know, snowy and below zero, we won't be starting next week either.
Sewer plant, well, pump installation update is.
Wednesday.
Stole my thunder. I have it scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th.
Weather permitting.
Everything is on hand, it's just waiting for gas water to come, which is scheduled for Wednesday, the 19th. Village receives one-year extension of its disinfection exemption permit at the sewer There was some concern and we discussed this at public works meeting about getting this exemption. Obviously, we received it. This is to hopefully push back the installation of the UV lighting for disinfection until we can rehab the plant in 2017, which was part of the conversation about the lighting in the old shop because that is probably where this equipment would end up going. For that, Safe Routes to School grant application update, there's a copy of the enclosed application in your packets. It was submitted last week. It calls for $148,000 project with 118,400 being federal share and the remaining 20% will come match at $29,600, which would come from the account. I believe and I think staff believes also that this will come in much cheaper than what's projected there, so kind of a wait and see. It's all in all, it's definitely a feel-good project because it's promoting child safety, so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Economic development, really interesting work.
Alrighty. I'm going to start with smartphone app. I sent in everybody's packet, something screenshots, phone apps. I would like to be able to hook up a smartphone and show you the real point of the technology in here to do it. And my phone actually died a few minutes ago because there's a possibility I checked mine more than every 6.5 minutes and so my phone dies pretty quick. When we talked in the beginning about communicating with residents, there was no one perfect way to do it. Some people want things in writing, they want to read the newspaper, they want to hold on to it. Some people check websites and increasingly people want things that are electronic. When we were talking about Nixle, with the Nixle we talked about tonight, that little plan, the Nixle Engage, you could send information about a little less urgent things, but initially with the free Nixle, you were looking at things that were unplanned, urgent, unscheduled. If I see a text come across my phone from Beach or PD, it's, okay, there's a road closed, there's a train crashing somewhere, it's not stopping, get some fluffy cupcakes at the base ale. So that's something that was of a little more urgent nature. When you're looking at a phone app, a lot of us when we went to IML stopped in some booths and they had these phone apps and we thought it was a great idea because it's something you have control over, you're waiting for someone to send you a message, you can go to your phone, you can open it up and you can look and see what's going on. Most of these apps, if you have notifications or information, there's a badge on it, a message will come across your screen, but you can actually open the app and look for it. If you've got a Facebook account, somebody posts something, it gets buried in the feed five minutes later and whatever it is, if you don't go hunt for it, it's gone. Things that the app does that Nixle does not do, you can also do notifications, they can be urgent, they can be non-urgent. I even was thinking about things every two months of notifying residents that water bills are due five days before the end of the month, water bills are due Friday, after Friday there could be late charges applied. You could send out notifications when brush pickup starts, brush pickup ends, you know, remember don't park when there's so many inches of snow. You know, there's things you can send out, it wouldn't be all the time, but several times a year. And you could also let people know of events that are coming up. There's also calendars that are available. You can link calendars from other taxing bodies so that someone can open the app, you can see all the village meetings coming up, you can get linked to township meetings, you can link school board if you wanted, you can link library districts. So the people would have the ability to be able to look at calendars they want to look at and disallow the others. There's also a public works reporting section of the app where people, you can build in as much as you want. You could build in street lights that are out, snow removal wasn't done, potholes, you know, anything you wanted the public to be able to inform you of. All they have to do is go in, it'll take the GPS location off their phone, they can send a little message or not and hit send and it goes to the village and immediately, you know, what's going on without having to have someone call for 10 minutes and say, this, you know, this light's been out for four days and nobody did anything about it. For the economic development side, half of economic development is bringing new business in, the other half is trying to keep your businesses in business and you can set up business directories in these, where you can list every business in town, they would automatically get their phone number, their address, and the address will link to an app. You could open it up and if you want to call a business, all you do is just open the app, find them, press a button and it dials it directly from your phone. We had even talked about things down the road that maybe the businesses, we want extra things listed and we can make arrangements for doing that some other ways, but at this point, it would fulfill a lot of things besides communication. Play devil's advocate, I've had some conversations with somebody that had a White Pages app on their phone and said, you don't really have to, you know, you could look it up in White Pages if you want a phone number. I'll throw my daughter under the bus, she was looking for a Mexican restaurant and telling her she forgot the name of it one night. So she goes on to Google, Mexican restaurants, beacher, and all of a sudden sees 100 of them in the area and goes, oh, I forgot about this one in St. John and she left town. So we're trying to keep people in town and make it as easy as possible for them to use the existing businesses and, you know, keep their tax dollars in town. I put an informal survey up on Facebook, on my page and on the beacher group, and I asked them, if you had a choice of any combination of the following methods of receiving community information, what would be your preference? And the options I gave them was number one, telephone or robocall to your landline and I said for dire emergency only. Two was text or email and that was the same category and it was emergency or urgent only. Number three was village newsletter mailed twice a year. Number four was village website. And number five was smartphone app and I listed that you could report public works things and you could link to calendars, et cetera. Number six was none of the above or I have a better idea and I didn't get any of those. The way the responses came back, the highest amount of responses was text and email. There were 18, this is not a huge amount. Smartphone app came in second with 11, newsletter was 10, that kind of surprised me, that was up pretty high. Robocalling was nine and a lot of people posted that they would want emergency only because some of them feel like they're inundated. There were some comments that the school was sending a lot of robocalls out and they said sometimes it was a little much. And the bottom one was website. I only got four responses for website and that also surprised me. I decided to do some research and call the villages that were using. There's two main companies that I got bids from because I couldn't find anybody else. A lot of the bigger cities have their own app developers that write something on their behalf. So the two companies I found, I talked to them and I decided to call some of the villages that had apps that were using them. So, nobody returned my calls. I used the app, I could get through the app, which was cool, I could find these offices and figure out how to get through them. The only one I heard back from was Bensonville and it wasn't the city, it was a consultant who had actually directed them to get this app. And she was, honestly to say she's a little older, but she actually sounded like she might have been about my age. And she says that she does not have a smartphone unlike me, she doesn't use Facebook, she doesn't use Twitter, but she says if you're not mobile right now, you are not relevant. She says that's what she advises all her people, in order to reach people, you've got to be electronic and you've got to be mobile. The only other town I talked to was Calumet City and I was able to get directly through to someone in the mayor's office. And the gentleman I talked to loved the app, although he admitted they have not marketed it at all. Most of their residents, he says, were unaware of the fact that they even had an app. As a matter of fact, someone I talked to when they answered the phone didn't know they had the app. But he liked the idea of the public work section of it because he said they got a lot of reporting in the summertime even though people didn't know about the app. They were sending in messages about potholes and street lights and he said it freed up time at the village because people weren't on the phone taking these calls, they could just get the report and go out. And he said it was pretty instant. They got the email instantly because he's the one that gets them. So he was really happy with it. He says they're going to be doing a marketing campaign to do more with the app, but for that standpoint alone, he liked it. Pricewise, I put the prices in the packet of both of the apps, they're similar. The first app company, I initially, that was my favorite, it's very colorful and very engaging looking. We had some issues, some miscommunications with the company in a few cases when we were trying to hammer down exactly the pricing and some of the things like who does what amount of labor, who uploads the information, some of the answers were not a little clear and it was kind of, well, you could do it, we could do it, but you could do it too. So I wasn't 100% satisfied that there would be, it would take a lot of staff time, I think. Sorry, it's getting late, my brain's starting to freeze. The second company has printed pricing, you can go to the website, everything is published. They have a lot of services available. They're also willing to write programs, if there's anything that your city needs that they don't have, they would sit down with you, they would decide exactly what you need, they would quote you a price before you start and then you determine if you want to participate in that or not. Their upfront pricing was a little higher, their sign-on fee was a little bit higher, their business directory cost an extra amount, but their annual fees are lower. I think by the time you got to year three, they would actually be less expensive than the first app. Particularly, there were some outside fees. The first app company had to pay $100 a year to Apple to be in the App Store. The second company, that came out of your annual fees, they don't make you pay that. So, you know, there were some little differences in pricing. Anything else I tried to find, I know some companies that provide what they call 311 apps where all you do is report problems with public works. I can't imagine anybody would want to download something like that. The more the app would do for you, I think the more people would use it. And we tried to get information out of both companies as to what percentage of residents were downloading these apps and they couldn't tell you because Apple won't give you that information. With Android, you can get the information, but Apple doesn't tell you that. You would almost have to go in every day, they told me, and every day kind of look at the comparisons because Apple won't give you specific numbers. But they says they were thinking around 17% of the population. Again, they says it's difficult to tell because most of the cities that have them haven't marketed the app. This is something where I thought if we did a business directory, you could actually let the businesses do the marketing for you, give them a flyer and let them hand it out to their customers and, you know, it's something the whole community would want to push. But anyway, this is something that I thought would, you have a little more control, it's on your phone, you can go to it, you can get the information you want. We could still do alerts and notifications that are either urgent or non-urgent, but it's not something necessarily that would compete with Nixle because you would want Nixle to be the urgent, like drop everything, this is the police department telling you that something is going on. And actually, there is budget money in my economic development budget to be able to cover the app.
Can you attach pictures to your service request?
I did attach pictures, I did screen prints and.
No, 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 not the Mercy, the app. If I wanted to send a service request to public works, can I take a picture of crime scenes?
Yes, yes, there was a spot where you could upload the photo in the app. Yep, absolutely. And it takes your GPS location, but you can also, I mean, if you happen to be on your way to work and you get halfway to work and say, I've got to report that and you stop someplace, you don't want that GPS location to go through because you're not in town anymore.
If I want to spy on Buddy, I can take your picture.
Oh, here we go.
Yes, you could. Yes, you could. And actually, on one of these screen prints I did, I think for the Bensonville app, I clicked on lights and lighting and it took my GPS location at the moment, but then I put it over my house and I just put corner of Keenan and Chestnut Street, it was out, just to type it in to show what it would look like. But you can either use the GPS location or just tell it where it's located.
Does it tell us who sent the message or can we?
There is a screen, I'm not 100% sure, I didn't get that much into detail talking to them about it, whether it was a mandatory field. There is a field for name and contact, name and address. I don't think it's mandatory that you fill it out. There's different things, Calumet City has one for crime reporting because they want that and that is completely anonymous. You can send in a tip that says, I see this happening at this location and it comes through completely anonymously.
And if someone downloads it, you said we would only know if they downloaded it to the app.
Yes, Apple, I guess, will give you a range, but they won't give you specific numbers of how many people have downloaded it. At Google, they, you know, they know exactly and they freely share that information.
Google is an open app. Apple is restricted. That's why. They see that as proprietary information. Google sees that as, why bother?
Right. Well, just like there's a fee to be in the App Store, that $100 a year and there is nothing for Google.
The only question I had and the only reason I feel more comfortable in saying it now because I'm tightening the budget even more, is I'm wondering if we should pay for something like this out of an operating expense and not out of that capital and economic development. And that's something we can talk about in finance committee. Because I don't know, the revenue source we would use to fund this, this is a continuing obligation over time, is coming out of the capital account, which was used for one time and undeveloped, but the numbers are getting to the point now where I can probably fund it as an operating expense. I just don't like it in an account that doesn't have a year of other sources of income.
Well, in the first company, I know we talked about a five-year contract and they said they would build in a 3% escalation where they might charge you an extra 3% a year, but, you know, pretty much you sign a contract that says I have the option of up. but, you know, pretty much you sign a contract that says I have the option of upcharging you 3% a year, probably going to get a 3% a year upcharge, even though they said they won't. The other one is just annual, actually, their, their fee is monthly, it's $185 a month. But she says she wants to pay yearly, pay yearly, she says you want to pay me 10 years in advance, you can, but it's a one-year contract, and after that, it auto-renews, you can cancel anytime. I think when we talked to the first guy, he said five years, but if you prove you don't have funding, then you can give out your contract.
I refer to the annual probably as a year. You must, you did say you can cancel anything. But what you're suggesting, what you're suggesting...
She says, yeah, you sign a one-year contract, after that, it auto-renews, you know, you can, you can renew it or you don't have it.
Will they send you any noise for an argument?
I imagine so, I didn't get that deep into conversation.
China, did I hear?
Yeah, I was going to ask Marcy a question, so, just to make sure we're on the same page. You're basically saying I-City no, constituent outreach yes?
I believe so. Like it says, when I started out, I liked the I-City more, it says it was very pretty. The constituent outreach has a homepage, I think it's a little more user-friendly, and I like the fact that the pricing seems stable, everything seems kind of set in stone, and there are no dubious, dubious charges, dubious upcharges.
Because I, I was able to upload one of them.
Were you?
Yes, Libertyville, which is one of the constituent outreach ones.
Yep.
I did Buffalo Grove.
Huh?
I did Buffalo Grove and ran around in that one for a while.
Did you, were you able to find any of the I-City ones? I couldn't find those.
I didn't go to I-City because I, when I looked at this and, and looked at what I thought would be an advantage just by going through the packet that Marcy provided, I saw that the constituent outlook was probably the better of the...
Granted, it doesn't have the, the polish that's out there, but really, that's, what you have there is a photo that's blown up, so it's, what's going to be is the, the bitmap's only going to be so detailed, otherwise, it's going to be too large to be able to download on these, on your smartphone. So we're trying to keep that smaller. And when you ran around it, you were able to get a lot of information, and on top of that, you were able to link to, I mean, I literally was able to jump into other, you know, the Buffalo Grove area, you could, there's three schools that cover that area.
Well, yes.
And, and it'll, when you hit that, it'll automatically on your smartphone dump you into Internet Explorer, or really, the Internet, to find where, you know, and all the details are there.
Yes. I did the Libertyville, and I thought it was really cool, I mean, you could go to their events, you could click on a, on a board meeting, and literally, right there, you could, there was a button for agenda, you could boom, hit agenda, and literally, you could have that agenda right there.
And you could click add to my calendar, when you go into any calendar event, and it puts it into your phone calendar.
You could name any of the events that are right on there, and it'll automatically pop right into your calendar for that.
Buffalo Grove is a weird one, because, and she said it took her almost a year to build that app. It's, well, all the taxing bodies got involved, they all shared the price, and you'll, you'll see even with calendars, they had, you know, 10 calendars.
Oh, yeah.
Notifications, everybody can send you notifications, I think that might be a little too crazy for here, but, yeah, that was a huge, a huge app.
Yeah, this was, this was more than just Buffalo Grove, the city.
Oh, yeah.
This was huge. Because when you get in there, it's, okay, you figure it's going to be one school system, there's three. And then when you get in there, there's even more information when you get even further. So, I mean, to me, I, looking at the two of them, and cost-wise, right up front, you're probably going to be paying a little more, but in the long run, cost is going to start recapturing.
Yeah, I figured by year three, and after that, then you've saved money if you bonded the constituent outreach.
If you had an idea, you could sell ads to the businesses, if you have an enlarged, for $50, you could sell ads on the business directory and like pay for the service.
Well, we even talked, like, for $50 a year per business, all it's going to have is your address, which will also link to a map and a phone number. You know, you press the phone number, you dial from your phone, but if you even wanted to put a little paragraph about your business, or a link to your website, or your hours, even just listing your hours, that could be something that would be 50 bucks a year. I mean, I brought it up to my boss because I'd jump on that in a minute. He says for an extra 50 bucks, and he says I can put my hours, I can put my specials on there. She allows four upgrades to the full business directory a year at no extra charge, you know, they just do that as part of the maintenance fee. I said, well, suppose a business opens or closes, and we just want to add it. She says, we do that for no charge, she says if you start calling us three times a day, we'll start charging you for it. But otherwise, if you're doing a whole database, you know, don't, that's four times a year.
Two points, the, the one thing, as far as the business directory, if you, I looked at it one way, and Marcy actually set me straight real quick, that basically, with the businesses on the phone app, we're actually advertising our businesses in the community, which I think that's where economic development comes in, is we're supporting our businesses, we're advertising our businesses. And that's the point that has to be stressed. And the second thing is, along with this app and NICSOL, we have discussed, not saying we're going to do it, it's been discussed, Marcy touched on it, that there is a possibility we may ask, like, Washington Township, or the school district, or the fire department to join and partner with us, it wouldn't be as big as Buffalo Grove, so I don't think there'd be a problem. So I'm saying is that if we jump the hurdle down the road, we could possibly save somebody by partnering with other organizations that don't have these tools, and then go from there.
Now, Marcy, one of the things I noticed was, you know, COC provided a cost for doing the, for building your business directory, but I didn't see anything in your write-up concerning that on I-City.
There is, they did not charge you for it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the, that was the initial cost, it's higher, it's, it's $1,000 for the build, where I-City was 500. But I-City charged you 100 for the Apple Store, the other one didn't. There's an extra 500 for COC for the business directory, which the other one didn't charge, and I think I had a one-year cost for each of them on that page, and then by the end of the second year, then it kind of got even, by year three, COC is ahead.
Right.
But yes, no, they did not charge extra for the business directory.
Okay. I, I think it's a great idea, Marcy.
Come down to this budget.
We could, I believe we have $4,000 left.
This year would come out of your kind of development, talking about next year, your annual fee, I would try to put in new operating one. If this is going to be the expense we're going to have forever, I want to get in the operating.
Unless that's created, you're there, then you're operating.
Does anybody have any other questions? Do you like the idea?
I like it.
Well, can I make a motion?
Sure.
To...
You certainly can.
To have this app built in this year's budget, on, probably through constituent outreach consultants, where the build price, I think it was about 3250, is that price?
32...
Oh, second. Question, comment?
Yeah, are you going at the one-year 3750?
Well, it's one year and it auto, it, it auto-renews, and the next year will be 2250 every year there.
But right now, you're going...
This year will be 3250.
37.
3750, I'm sorry, yep, thank you, I stand corrected, 37.
So we mark the business directory, right?
Yes, I think from the start, and then if we were to, to bring it to the businesses to sell ads, that's something we could even do for our first quarterly update, that would give us time to, you know, have to see it.
Show them what we can do first.
Exactly.
Well, on top of that, you, you need to get your business directory, you can fill in...
That's actually built, I, I built that when I worked at the village, it's got to be updated a little, Donna Rooney spent some time on it already, it's on our website, but we have to make sure all the businesses are on there.
Yeah, I mean, every one of them, it doesn't matter if they're, if they're part of the...
Chamber.
The chamber or not, this is all, this is really inside your town.
Yeah, and I, I think when we did the business directory last time, the parameters were business located in, I think we even did just 60401.
Right.
So that if somebody lives in town and owns a business in Chicago Heights or Park Forest, that does not matter, that would not qualify, it would have to be a business in town.
You have to, you have to have a physical presence in Washington Township or 60401.
Yep.
Motion for a second.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
You're one of the first communities, they have this new technology, really, I mean, there's towns that are 10 times your size, they hadn't thought about this yet.
All right.
Ooh.
All right.
Cutting edge.
That's going out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Smart phone, hold me back, just turn me loose.
He's got a tablet, Scott.
He's got a tablet now.
Oh.
He's got a tablet?
Yeah.
Pretty soon he's going to have a watch.
It's going to be the size of that tablet.
All right, intergovernmental meeting was postponed due to weather, we're looking at a date in March or April to reschedule the meeting once the threat of blizzards are gone. Could be May.
We are leaning towards May 29th, right? There might be a change. We're leaning toward that, it's unofficial, but Thursday, May 29th, I got to talk to the other taxing body, see if they have data's available for us this week, but that's a fifth Thursday we should be seeing. The, the fifth week in April, we looked at the board lobby, it's really, so it's not a problem.
Wayfinding sign update, and not really too much to report on that. I talked to Chuck at the last chamber meeting, and we were talking about signs at the entrance, the south and the north end of town, about putting placards up for the signs, but I believe this, we're talking more about something for downtown, and we really haven't had a meeting yet, so, we'll get that scheduled. Update on sewer service to Bernard Welding, committee held a meeting to discuss annexation strategy in conjunction with this request from Bernard's. We have not met with any landowners yet, however, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday with one of the landowners. Did you want to go into any detail on that whole thing, Bob?
No, I'm just saying we need to tell the board that we're working toward a strategy, and see if it works. But as you know, this is a very laborious and tedious process when you've got property involved.
We will have, we, we will have more of an update after our, our meeting this week.
Yes, more to update.
Results of meeting with Buxton on retail analysis, we met with a representative of Buxton out of Fort Worth, Texas, and they, they originally started out as a company that worked for retailers that were looking for places to locate. So they would look for ideal locations based on demographics, buying trends of the residents, et cetera. Well, they, the story they tell is they were working in Texas, there was a town that was trying to attract a major retailer. Well, the retailer decided not to settle in that town, and when the town contacted him, why not? They says, well, Buxton told us not to, we're not our ideal market. So they contacted Buxton and says, well, why don't you work with us and tell us what an ideal retailer would be for our town. So Buxton started then working with municipalities to try to attract retailers, they worked with some of the biggest retailers in the country. So they met with us about the future, they are expensive, it's nothing we can do at the moment, this would be maybe down the road, if we got the Eliana or airport, that would, will be more conducive to something like this. But they do do really cool reports, I mean, they can, they look at credit card reports, all kinds of buying trends, they can let your retailers know the type of, the brands of beer that they're missing out on, if they're not, a restaurant is only serving these type of beers, and most of your town likes two different brands, I mean, they can hone it down that specifically. So they did do one report for us that was a little more generic, and it was a leakage report to see how much money they're losing on different areas, the things you don't often in town, where people are going elsewhere for it. It was a bit generic, we found some things that maybe didn't match, and did you get that email or setting?
Yes, sir.
Where, yeah, where, he says he didn't work on that, he gave us the methodology, but it included internet sales and other things. We had seen a couple of weird things like electronics, and showed that we had a big number of electronics sold in town, and we're like, we don't really have a electronics dealer in town. But it also included internet sales, but a lot of interesting stuff to tell where people are spending their money, more specifically, not here, so. But that's some of the things they do in the report, and I don't even remember what was the price on it, was it 150? 50 per year, though? 150 for three years.
That's where we're 15 years running.
Yeah. They did send another email saying that they did work on, yeah, that they also had other things they could work in it on a lesser degree.
30 cents.
Yeah. But again, pricey, but they...
Marcy worked for a lot less than that a year. She was like, I don't...
Yes, I did. And then it's spring newsletter time, it'll go out mid-April, and it's time to begin directing articles. The one we talked about last fall was letting people know that there are no all-clear signals for tornado warnings, and we're looking at other articles, well, if we download the app, we'll be able to, we'll be able to put that in the newsletter.
The app, the NICSOL, we got to push that.
Yep.
There's plenty of things to put in the newsletter, if you have any articles of interest that you want, let us know, or let us pull through yours.
And that concludes my report.
The Illinois Expressway, there's two more hearings coming up, on February 18th at the Lowell Mill School. And February 19th at the local operators 150 training center in Lowington. Basically, four investment firms have indicated an interest to build the Eliana, one of them was disqualified, and it was one of them, like that Laughlin, or Laughlin Company.
Well, they were disqualified.
South suburban airport, I think was the most important, is we're sending with, meeting with a new committee at Will County. Basically, we've expressed our concerns about the impacts of the airport to the surrounding communities, as well as economic development and so on and so forth. It seems like right now we have very good communication, and it seems like that the Will County group is willing to work with us. South suburban years of managers meeting, there was really nothing new there. I, McBatt, what would you handle?
Yeah, we were actually the second claim in our new co-op, I can't remember what the claim was, but, do you remember, what was the claim, we were the least claim, we